Order this session. Okay, I'm going to call the order of the work session of Bend City Council.
All right, so first up is our quarterly update. So this is our opportunity to share progress on the city council goals and related work plan. So we have a presentation that we'll walk through to give you a high level overview. And then, as we do with every quarterly update, we want to focus in on a few items that are timely. We'll have an opportunity for board, committee, commission involvement towards the end. And then we'll wrap up with some time needed for council liaison assignment shuffle. So we sent some email out. If we are running a little short on time, I might defer that towards the end of the meeting with council action reports. So we'll get moving right into the kind of high level overview. Just a reminder, we revised the council goal and work plan at the last meeting. Part of the biennial budget adjustment, so we went from 83 actions to 45 in reflection of things that were completed and really slimming and clarifying what are guiding principles versus projects and repackaging some things. So we've updated the dashboard to reflect that plan. The dashboard, which I'm not going to go over today in detail, it is online for folks to see. That includes everything from our response times for our fire and EMS services, development activity in the core that we're tracking, our goal around creating housing units for individuals experiencing homelessness, our city demographics, our representation on city boards and committees.
Okay, she'll be back.
Okay, all of that information's on the dashboard, as well as our status report. That covers where those 45 actions are, which I will note of the 45 actions, all are in progress and moving along just fine. There's one that needs some attention, and that's our middle income housing programs. We're in the process of hiring, so that is underway. We're just a little behind there. Some significant milestones, just to highlight a few from each of our six school areas. So in accessible and effective city government, we have implemented the stipend program. We've begun with the environment and climate committee last week, human rights and equity commissions next week. The rest of our boards, committees, commissions will be through the month of August. So it's kind of a rollout based on the timing of those meetings. We are also in the process of, we have goals around our city facility needs. So we have a city hall strategy as well as a public works campus, shared public works campus out at Juniper Ridge, which is a little further along than city hall. We're going through a property acquisition strategy there. But for public works campus, we have really solidified our vision, our goals, our programming needs, and even some conceptual site layout for that facility. We'll begin diving deeper into our budget. We'll be coming back to council next couple of months with an update there. Environment and climate goal, our big focus there has been the home energy score. It will be the stewardship subcommittee. We'll be receiving an update on that in the public involvement process on Monday, July 25th, at the stewardship subcommittee. We've also been really focused on the climate friendly and equitable communities' rulemaking process, which is slated to finalize the rules. The Department of Land Conservation and Development, or the LCDC, the body that approves that, that's Land Conservation Development Commission, is slated to approve those next week. We've been providing pretty substantive input, which has resulted in more resources being advocated to implement. That's been a concern of ours, to make sure that we can actually follow through on the intentions. And then we've more recently begun to dive a little deeper now that the rules are looking to be more finalized on some things related to the transportation system plan. And I continue to kind of use Councilor Keebler and Broadman as a sounding board for that. So look for those to be finalized next week. Public safety, just want to report, it's been 4th of July has occurred since our last meeting. So, and the council went through a process to ban fireworks, the personal use of fireworks. From a public safety perspective, that's largely seen as quite a success. We had actually zero calls for fire for the night of 4th of July, which is a rarity. We did have complaints and we did have fireworks. It's not, but it really, I think, the culture that we're trying to create of really minimizing that kind of behavior, I think, was fairly successful. And again, that's a big relief to our first responders that are generally just busy anyways during that time. Also, our chief's advisory committee is in process. We are, the selection process includes input from our equity and inclusion director, Zavi Borha, our equity engagement with our communications department, and Michaela with our neighborhood system, all helping to do an initial screen. I think they had over 70 applicants, and they'll be going through a process over the next couple of weeks with the goal of launching in September. Under shared prosperity, Juniper Ridge, large lot partition, so that's taking the city-owned land and really partitioning it so that it's ripe for development. And we'll go through our request for proposal process, so that's underway. And you're going to hear from our Bend Economic Development Advisory Board and their chair on the strategic plan that BDAB is undertaking. So you'll hear about that later, I won't cover that now. Transportation, you'll hear tonight SDC update, which stands for System Development Charged Impact Fees that developers pay to account for their impact on all forms of infrastructure. We're kicking that off. And also the key routes, so key bicycle and pedestrian routes. We're going through a design process tonight. There's an action in the council, in the business meeting, to approve a design contract for northeast area, including the Butler Market Wells Acres, but also a key north-south bike and pedestrian route. We're going to do a more comprehensive review of our key routes at the second meeting in August. And then lastly, housing, Councilor Perkins will provide a pretty exciting update on some efforts related to expanding shelter capacity and meeting that goal of 500 housing units. So there's some things that just have happened in the last month or so. I won't, I'm going to let Megan go through that here shortly. And then Stevens Road, the process that we went through to expand our urban growth boundary is part of a legislative process. There's an action item tonight to dedicate a portion of that 20 acres to the city that would be reserved for deed restricted affordable housing. So I want to put the focus now on permitting. And so one of the dashboards that we have right now is around just development activity. We are going to, in the next couple of weeks, be updating our dashboard to really be more transparent about permit timelines, where we are in the review process. And so I think what we wanted to do tonight is give you a preview and some background as to how the process works, some language, terminology that will help understand, kind of a diagnosis of what we see as the issues. We know that we've got turnaround times that we want to improve. We've got some strategies we want to walk through with you today. And it'll be, you know, it's one of the things that part of the city business, it's a continuous improvement, right? It's not a one and done. This is something we're always sort of fine tuning because we have new regulations coming at us from the state or even from our own sort of local community with new codes. We have, the market is changing constantly. We have, you know, just new housing product being built. And so really changing our processes to reflect where the market is going. And then, of course, just staffing, you know, the environment changes consistently. So what we want to do is always fine tune. And so the strategies that we're going to talk about today are just part of that process. So I'll turn it over to Colin.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor, City Councilors. I'm Colin Stevens, I'm the Community and Economic Development Director. I'm going to talk about, as Eric said, permit timelines. And primarily, it's going to be building, planning, and engineering divisions. So those three divisions, and before, I've been in this position for about four months now, but before that, I spent quite a number of years being the planning division manager. And so I can cover any questions that you may have on that part. I also have in the audience DeeDee Fraley, who's the engineering division manager, and Joe McClay, who's the building division manager, who can answer questions regarding those types of permits. And Ray Boone from the Office of Performance Management, I believe, is on virtually for, if you have any questions about the data. So for a quick agenda review, so I'm going to talk a little bit about how development works and how we sequence permits, just so you understand some of the terminology that we use, because that's how we slice out or categorize the permits. And I'm going to talk about the review times that we're seeing and what trends may be affecting that. And then also talk about the goals that we have for the review times, and then strategies and initiatives for improvement for those turnaround times. So next slide. So this is a good example of one type of development that shows all of the permits that we're going to talk about today. This is a phase out of a Petrosa master plan. I think some of the councilors participated in the approval of that master plan. Once the master plan was approved, they submitted a subdivision application. And that, what a subdivision does is it divides the property up for kind of, for individual ownerships and puts it into kind of the areas where different types of development are going to happen. So the way a subdivision comes in, it first comes in through the planning division for what we call a type two review. So we'll have, we'll be tracking type two reviews later on. And that's what approves essentially the location of all of these new lots. And that gets, the planning division approves that. But before it gets finalized, it then goes to our engineering division to review all of the streets. And then within those streets are sewer lines and water lines, and there are franchise utilities within there. So it's a very complicated set of engineering plans, and they call that a tier three engineering permit. And so that's another one that we're going to talk about. Once that's approved, the developer builds those streets and water lines and sewer lines, and they install all of the utilities. And when that's done, the subdivision is platted. And that means that all of these little square, all these polygons become individual properties. Each one of them is then going to have building permits that are submitted for them. So these small ones are residential lots, so we're going to see primarily what we call single family. We're actually trying to call them single unit development now, duplexes, and townhomes. So that's most of what's going to go on here. And you'll see a metric in there for turnaround times for those. And they're sort of taken out from other types of building permits. Because this also shows this large lot here, that's planned and zoned for multifamily. So high density residential, so there's going to be an apartment building that'll eventually be built on that. And you'll see it later on, even though it's multifamily, it's residential, it's going to be lumped in with commercial because it's reviewed out of the building permit commercial code. So commercial covers a lot of things. So like an apartment building and a grocery store, we consider kind of the same thing as far as permit tracking. And then for this one, planning, engineering, and building are all still involved in that. It's much more of a closer relationship. It's not as consecutive, it's concurrent, more concurrent for this one. They usually come in right away for planning, to get their planning approval for like an apartment building, and then come in later for a building permit. But that building permit will have an engineering element to it too. So there's a lot of touch points for all three divisions for all of it. Any questions on this before I move on to the next slide? Okay, this one, just real quick, this is a permit queue, just to give you an idea of volume. I just stuck this up front to just give you an idea of what we're seeing. This is what is in-house with our staff. I think these numbers are accurate too this week. So for example, this shows like for a new residential application. So if you had a single unit development that you wanted to submit a permit for today, there's 338 in front of you. And that's ones that are pending, ones that are waiting for completeness check, and ones that are, have first or second revisions coming in. And as you can see, for commercial construction, there's almost 50. Engineering, there's 270, planning's got over 200. These are just residential and commercial remodels, so quite a bit of that. So that's just an indication of just a daily snapshot of what we're looking at on a day-to-day basis. So next slide. So I'm going to start with our planning review times. And I'll explain how we measure the review times and talk a little bit about goals on this one. And the same idea will go through the rest of these. So we start our measuring our turnaround time from when we have a complete application, like the fees are paid and everything that we need to review the application, it's been submitted into the city. And then we've got averages here, and this is a fiscal year. So it's July of last year through basically June 30th of just this pack, whatever that was, three weeks ago, over here. You can see there's quite a bit of volatility. We do have averages for all of these, and I'll explain what they are. But I do want to say, when our goals here are based, are compared to the averages, but you can see there's quite a bit of volatility. So where it does show that we're hitting our averages, sometimes, some months we hit it, sometimes we're doing great, other times we're not. How we came to the goals, these have been part of our budget goals that we've had for at least the past four or five budget cycles. The ones for planning are actually established more based upon state statutes because if we have state mandated turnaround times for planning, if we don't make them, it's, there's actually legal risk in that, rather than just consequences of objectives that we're not meeting. So planning, they've got the program structure to really meet these. So type ones, very, very simple planning applications. On average, we're hitting 35 days, our goal's 30. But you can see there's some volatility here, we're really up close to 50 days. And those are real simple things, like property line adjustments are an example of that. So type twos, planning applications, this would be that subdivision application that I showed you on that, one of the first slides. That would be a type two, that's kind of like the bread and butter of the planning division. Most of the stuff that you see under, you know, that's being built, subdivisions, commercial buildings, go through our type two review. We have a 60-day goal to turn those around. And we're about 63 days, but again, you can see there's some volatility. And we're up to 76 days in February, but we do have some that are down lower. So all in all, not too bad for planning. This is our type threes, we don't get a lot of these. These are development applications, but they have to go to a public hearing for a variety of reasons. Sometimes it's a conditional use permit. Sometimes we know there's going to get an appeal, so we send it to a hearing. We're doing pretty well, the 75 days goal, we're at 77. A lot of that's being driven by this one peak at the end. This one's under appeal, and so this is kind of an outlier, but it's part of the data. Any questions on planning?
Yeah, Colin. Questions? So you're talking about, these numbers are from completeness. What do we know about how long it takes to get a complete application? Because I'm hearing sometimes there's some back and forth before you get there. There's that upfront delay before you even get to these numbers. So what do you know about what we're seeing there with people trying to get things in and having to try three or four times before it's officially deemed complete and ready to?
That's a good question. And I think that's going to be something we're going to talk about, is this iteration when we're in the period to get to completeness. And then after first review, it's a back and forth with the applicants, and it's all over the place. So sometimes we get a complete application right off the bat. Usually, that's not the way it works. There's generally one or two items that can take a little bit of time. Some things can be incomplete for a significant amount of time. At least for planning, there's a deadline. Once there's, out of the state mandated timelines, you have 30 days to let the applicant know what's missing. And then they have 180 days to give you all, everything that you asked for. And so, and if they don't meet that 180 days.
And we're going to go over that data that I think you want in a second. And it's more of a building, probably engineering, than it is probably planning.
Okay.
Okay, next slide. So I've broken out the building permits into the single unit development duplex townhome building permit types. And then the next slide will have a commercial. But this is something that our development community tracks because there's some folks in the building community who focus on this type of development. And so it is a good indicator of how things are going. So this is for single family dwelling from our completeness till the issuance of the first review, this top chart. And as you can see, during the winter, it went down, and it's up pretty high. It's 74 days for June, which was pretty high. Our goal's 35 days, the average, not too bad, but you picked up your permit in January, you're pretty happy. If you have it in today, not so much, it's 74 days. We do suspect that that is because SDCs went up, both park district and city SDCs. And if people got their permits in before June 30th, they got the old SDCs because they went into effect July 1st. And so we do, it spiked because of that. But nonetheless, it is a spike. And a lot of that spike is not only due to volume, but it's due to staffing because we have a stagnant level of staffing, and we've had issues filling all of our staff positions, which we'll talk about in a minute. So that's why there is that kind of volatility, because we have no control over the volume. This is a real interesting one, I'm going to skip this middle one and go to this slide. And this shows work in progress. And so that's indicative of the volume of work that's going in, that the staff are dealing with. So, you know, back in last summer, it was in the 700s, different things that they are working on on a daily basis. And that dropped through the winter months, and now we're way back up over 900 for May, close to 900 in June. And that tracks almost perfectly with our turnaround times. So it's, you know, it's pretty intuitive, right? You know, more work, same staff, it leads to higher turnaround times. But this is what's interesting. This one in the middle is where we get into that iterative process. This is after, well, what this includes is not only the first review times, because the way a permit works for both building and engineering is that they do a first review, they mark it up, they send out a correction letter to the applicant. And the applicant's back in the applicant's court without really any timeline that the city has control over. And so they can turn stuff in the next week, or it could take them a couple of months. And so it's, that's that back and forth during that review cycle. And that has a completely different curve to it than what we've seen over here. It really spiked up during the winter months. We are down to about two months now from acceptance. This is the actual issuance of the permit, where they pick it up at the front counter and they can start building. Average is 51 days. We don't have a goal for that because it is a back and forth iterative process. But this is, this really shows how things are different when the city doesn't have control over them. They're going out, back out to the private sector, coming back in for at least one, if not multiple, review cycles.
And we're going to talk about a strategy that, we're needing some partnership with our private development community to get better quality applicant applications on the front end. So that is.
Between those top two?
Between this one and this one?
Yeah.
So this one is for the city, when the city does their review of the permit, how long it takes before we issue a first letter of correction. I mean, to say, okay, it's back in your court, here's what you need to do to finalize your permit. This one includes this, but it then also includes what, how long it took for the applicant to respond to the city, to finish all the items that we've asked for, so that it is ready to issue.
So should we add those two numbers together?
No.
Is the total time 87? No.
No, it's actually, I had the same question.
Right, yeah, thank you.
It was 59 days to get an application out from start to finish, but you didn't get a first review until 74 days. That's because these, in 59 days, they actually got their first review back here. And then it took some time to get there. So what we expect to see, because now applications are going out in 74 days, if we go out to say July, August, when these permits are actually going to get issued, this is going to be way, probably over 100 days. So we're going to see that spike continue to go up probably through August and into September before it starts coming back down. Because it'll be that 74 days plus, say, 30 days for the applicant and the city to finalize that permit. So it's, but a great question. Next slide, please. This is for the commercial building permit, so this would be that apartment building that I was talking about, or grocery store, but that's a new commercial construction. So we have a goal of 44 days for the first review, but again, this is first review. And, oh, I'm sorry, I kind of got myself mixed up. This is for commercial remodels. The first one is for commercial remodels, which we call tenant improvements, or TI. So we do separate those out differently than new construction. Goal for 45 days, we're at 44, but again, some volatility there. The one that we really are mostly engaged with the development community on is the second one, and that would be for new construction, like that apartment building, grocery store, any new commercial construction. Goal of 90 days, our average is 68, but again, it's, we've blown that goal repeatedly through here, like last November, again in January, April, over 100 days, even though we're looking pretty good here. So on average, doing fairly well, but sometimes with the volumes, we are not meeting the goal. But here, again, I wanted to point out this, once we leave here, even though we're at an average of 68 days for our first review, once it starts getting into that iterative process with the applicant, the developer, we're at an average of 103 days. And, you know, and that spikes up, we've been at 146 in February, you know, really over 100 for most of the calendar year, and around 94 today. Again, we're seeing that same trend where it starts to go. Any questions on this one? And then I just have one more slide on the data, and then we're going to go into sort of more of what we're seeing and then some strategy. So engineering review times, so this is for the engineering division. So these first two slides are the fairly simple permits. Tier one is just like a sidewalk. Tier two is where a little bit more advanced kind of permit, where they actually are cutting into the street. But then the type threes, these are the real complicated ones that especially our subdivision developers are reliant upon to get out. Our first review on these type threes, medium hold, actually, we've been pretty good, even when we're, even during the spikes. Our goal is 45 days, but we've been up mostly, we've been below 60 days to get that first review back to the applicant. But then, we really see review times go up. So there is this period of time between first review and when we actually issue that permit. You know, we're saying 181 for, as an average, but I think we're benefiting from some better review times a year ago because from March, April, May, and June, we've been over 200 days. So that's really where I think we need to focus. It's not on our first review, it's in this iterative process with the applicant. I think I'm right, are there any questions on this one?
I'm just curious with that iterative process, is that it's been taking staff time, that delay? Or, you know, what's the speculating, everybody?
It can be really anything. I mean, what we'll talk about in the next slide is sometimes people will give us inferior plan sets and just do... Should I just do the next?
Yeah, just, let's go to the next slide, yeah.
Okay, so these are the trends that are affecting permit review times. Permit volume, you know, we've already talked about that, and staffing. We have been beat behind the curve in trying to get all of the staff that we need. We initially went into COVID two years ago. It was, you know, we kind of froze things. We were like, you know, the economy's going to, who knows what's going to happen? You know, we're fearful that the economy is going to tank. But we kind of had the opposite effect. Once we realized that people can work from home and people really wanted to move to Bend, we saw, you know, Zoom down here, and so permits really went up quickly. And by the time we were able to react to that, we were competing with the private sector for really the same skilled employees who have the, you know, licenses, the certifications, the education to be able to do this highly technical type of work. And so we've had a real tough time being able to just fill the positions that we have. You know, I've said that staffing's an issue, but I'm not here to ask for more staff. I think we have the correct number of staff that we have, you know, in our pool of full-time equivalents. We just need to be able to hire them. But the good news there is that in talking with our HR liaisons, with the division managers, I think that we are pretty close to being fully staffed, or will be fully staffed by the end of this quarter for the first time in really a couple of years. And then if you consider the training, I'm thinking probably around the end of the second quarter, so around the holidays, six months from now, we should have people really clicking along with those new hires and onboarding and fully contributing to the program. Okay, this next, the third bullet, is what I was talking about earlier, and that's users that are advantaging the system and what they're doing. And I understand it, is sometimes because they want to get in line, and so they'll give us inferior plan sets or plans that aren't completely developed or they know that have issues with them, to put them in line because they know that if they're in line and then they get that first review cycle, when they respond to that review cycle, it goes to the head of the line. So they're, you know, they don't have to go back to the end of the line. Once they get their first round of comments, they're put back to the front of the line. And so that's something that I think we need to be able to work with the development community on, and because this is kind of a partnership, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. Another issue that did have an effect that I think we've turned the corner on, and that's new software. It's called CityView, some of you may have heard of it. We launched it about three months before we went into COVID, which meant that everybody, city hall just closed. We lost, you know, face-to-face contact. And so we were basically training our staff, training our users remotely, and trying to learn how to work remotely at the same time. So that led to less than a, you know, the most efficient rollout of that new software. It also created touch points for staff, so staff that normally would be reviewing permits are having to answer the phone about how to, you know, how do I enter my, upload these plan sets, or how do I interface with the computer? As I said, I think we've turned the corner on that. I think the CityView is, still has some issues, we're working through that. We're learning how to use it better, there are upgrades that are coming out. And so I think we've moved past that. Then the other thing that we've learned recently that has been affecting permit times is just complexity of projects. Infill development, which is, we're very much encouraging, we have comprehensive plan policies that want us to do infill development. But there's, it's tough when you're trying to put a large building in an older part of town because the infrastructure is, in many instances, older, worn out, not up to snuff. And so, you know, it's just more of a difficult way to do development than what we call greenfield sites, which is, you know, areas where we're expanding into. Also, new construction types, I'm sure you've all seen the, what we're calling like a four-over-one or a five-over-one. It's those like the rate, where the raised redevelopment. Got a couple others that are under construction right now. So that's a new construction type that we're seeing. It's, you know, our staff is having to be able to review that and issue permits on those types of things. As Eric mentioned, we've got new codes. As Eric mentioned, we've got new codes, regulatory changes. It seems like every time the legislature meets, we have new initiatives come out. Especially under the legislative mandates, for example, just, we just adopted that middle, missing middle housing land division. I mean, that's a completely new type of development that we're going to see. And that's going to involve planning, building and engineering. And so that's, you know, we're going to have learning curves regarding those. Next slide. And so this is my last slide. But these are the strategies and initiatives. And the first one under community engagement, I think that's where we're really going to get the biggest impact for the for the effort that we put into it. And that is to work with the development community on their submittal qualities and other factors to help reduce that iterative iterative review time, that that back and forth, you know, some, you know, we have some developers where we have one or two, others, it's five or six times back and forth. We have a good relationship with the Central Oregon Builders Association, COBA. I think that they would be very willing to help us put together some stakeholder groups to 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 help work through some of these issues. Because I'd like to put a group together, both for the commercial permit side and then for the engineering tier three permit side. And I'd like to know what they're seeing from their side and they, and let them know what we're seeing from our side. Because this is a partnership, they can't, you know, we can't issue a permit without them and they can't get a permit issued without us. So it's a real partnership. And so I really want to lean into that over the next six months, get some, get some groups established, see what we can both do to help reduce those turnaround times. Also, increase capacity on our end, and that's what I was talking about with the staffing. So we can continue to continue to hire, hire the right people, encourage them to stay so we can keep that institutional knowledge. Also, when we're fully staffed, those spikes, you know, I'd like to be able to kind of round the spikes off a little bit at the top. And the one example, it's a couple of slides back, I won't make you go back, but those ones where we were over over two hundred days for those tier threes. And there are two staff members that are doing the majority of those. We should have four. And we have another two coming. Those are professional engineers, they're PEs. So they're, they've got a lot of engineer, they would have to have a lot of engineer experience that are licensed by the state, so they're hard to find. But we've had two folks doing that, you know, a lot of, a lot of the review times is being met, some of our goals are being met by overtime and people not feeling like they can take their vacations. And I really want to get past that. And so we'll continue to focus on on staff. Then other, the other things are internal efficiencies. I'll just bang through these real quick, third party review, we've already done that. The other ones are really related to our technology. You see, you really learn how to use that CityView reporting muscle that it has to to help communicate between our divisions. Upgrade and investigate improvements to CityView. Look at our workflows and process mapping to make sure that we're being as efficient as we can be internally. These other ones are, I know that some of the development community is watching this presentation or will will look at the video. These are intended to be, you know, for them, because these are kind of technical. But it's things that they've been asking for. That's to reestablish what's called a master resubmittal plan for for single family dwellings. Prioritize complete building permit submittals. That's to address what we call deferred submittals, where they kind of bring in little pieces of a commercial application and not give us all, give us the whole thing at once. And then the last one is just providing data that we have in house to the design community so that they don't have to reinvent the wheel, which is something that we're not doing right now. But I think we we should be able to push that data out to them. That's it for my prepared portion of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Do we have any pre-approved plans for like an ADU, for example? Within this even?
We we don't, but that's what this master resubmittal plan is. So somebody could come in. We were actually, we used to do this, not for ADUs, but it could be done for ADUs, but but for just a regular house. Is they, they basically have the same plan set. And if they get that approved, and then that's called a master, and then they can just resubmit it. And it goes through the, through the permit process much quicker because we, it's on the list of a pre-preapproved plan set. So somebody could take advantage of that if we get that program reestablished and say, okay, I want this ADU to be a master. And then they could build, you know, twenty of them around town and use the same plan set.
Cool. So, but that's for a specific developer. Someone else could not, oh, could I look and say, I want to use their, you know?
Plug the chamber, I believe it's part of a Leadership Bend's project. Just created a website that has sort of a, like a, here's how you do an ADU.
Yeah, great.
And here is some kind of moving towards that kind of template so that those are easier.
I thought I'd heard of, you know, this idea, especially for the smaller, simpler, here are pre-approved plans that you could use.
For what, for what you want, Barbie, we want a pro, I would like to see a program and it's not on your slide and it's not in the scope of this presentation of the city providing, here's five types of ADUs. These are all approved.
Right.
Because a lot of ADUs are just like a single owner, property owner, looking to do something on their property. They're not developing around town. So I think that's a great idea. But the master resubmittal sounds like something that can be useful for developers right now, if we can go back to doing that.
And I think that was actually a program we talked about in one of our housing.
Middle, the middle income housing program too, and going back to hiring the staff to help to help do that.
Great, yeah. Great, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Colin. Is there any thought to pulling some of the simpler permit processes out of the queue onto a separate track like tenant improvements, which are different than building a whole commercial building? And maybe getting those out of the way quicker so that the other stuff can move through? Is that part of what we're thinking about doing?
Yep, that is something I've talked with Joe McClay about. We've, I've talked about that because, you know, there are things, I mean, like internal to a building. You know, it's just some demising walls within a particular structure.
Right, and just to.
That's a great idea.
Explain what we're talking about. Someone could have a commercial building, because I've gone through this before in an office I worked in where, you know, we moved to a different part of the building and we, they just needed to move some walls around and create a couple of offices for us interior to the building, nothing changed outside. And it, I've heard some complaints about those sort of sitting behind like a type three huge application and waiting for that to complete before they move up, whereas maybe we could move those out of the way quickly. So I think that's a really good idea. And then I don't know who mentioned it to me, but someone had something about, something about some sort of ombudsman or point person to help people move things through. And the other thing I'm thinking about is I've also heard people will get feedback about like, your PDF needs to be flattened or, you know, like this thing or this common thing that we send things back for. If there's a way to continue to communicate with a group of people and say, here's some common things we're seeing, spread the word, right, so that we don't have to keep sending things back. That seems like that could be part of the community engagement. Because I think there's frustration when people just keep, the the iteration is there's too many of them, right? That's part of why that numbers go up. So if we can reduce that by communicating from our end, that seems like a win.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there like a common mistakes thing on the, seriously?
There is, in fact, we just talked about that at our Central Oregon Builders Association meeting. Our, I guess that was last week, that, yes, we do have a, here's a comment, we'd like to keep it the one sheet and we are actually, we're going to recirculate that and update it. So that's, yeah, we do have that.
Yeah, and I don't know if there could be like a standing, you know, group going out of this. I know you talked about kind of the next six months working with the community. But it seems like this, you know, this information should be presented often to council so that we're measuring our numbers. There should be standing contact with the the development community so that this information continues to flow.
And on that note, so this this dashboard that you saw is still, it's in work in progress, but it should be completed in the next couple of weeks and it will be on our public facing dashboard. And so that way it gets in the cycle for the quarterly review updates for council, so you'll see it. We also just have, we already have monthly COBA meetings, stakeholder meetings that we use. Colin kind of referenced to really help track this and hold us accountable. And it goes a little bit both ways too, about just getting the quality of information up a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, and the other thing I liked seeing on here is the workflows and process mapping because I have also heard some feedback about sometimes it seems like different departments, someone says over here and it approves, and then this department says, no, you have to fix it. So just having our own internal process working really well and everyone communicating together feels like it will help reduce some of the times as well.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. And we're, we're kind of rounding out the quarterly update with just, we have some time for board committee commission comments. We typically have those comments kind of focused on the council goals, in particular, the the items that we covered today. I believe we have the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, the Bend Economic Development Advisory Board, and I see Human Rights and Equity Commission. I know we've just done an assignment. I don't, you don't need to speak, but what we, we want to have that open communication. So if there are comments that you'd like to share, I think councils would love to, council would love to hear that. So I might call on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee first, and I believe Cindy King, or I'm sorry, Heather Simmons is online from AHAQ.
I can't hear you. We can't hear you, Heather.
No, how about now? Okay. Good evening, mayor and councillors. I'm Heather Simmons. I'm here on behalf of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And for this evening's committee update, I'm going to tee up a request on behalf of the committee. So by way of review, the city and the committee have together built a successful affordable housing program through which we continue to make really great progress with council's affordable housing goals. Annual program dollars are fully utilized on projects that add to Bend's supply of affordable housing. And we have skilled developers who want to create even more affordable housing here. However, our affordable housing dollars are not stretching far enough. Of the projects we fund, many do not receive their full funding ask. What's more, each funding cycle leaves between two to ten proposals unfunded. Results of Oregon's Regional Housing Needs Analysis show that about two thirds of new construction should be affordable, meaning to the eighty percent AMI or under, to keep up with existing needs. Our current resources, our affordable housing dollars, our allocation of CDBG funds and our buildable city surplus land are just not enough. We need to find additional revenue. As such, the committee requests council permission to research potential revenue sources that might help us scale up our pace at which we are delivering new affordable housing units. Now, there may, might be several avenues worth exploring, including even a bond. However, we will not know until we research our options. So is this research activity something that the council will endorse?
Yes.
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 I think you're getting a big yes. Go forward, yes.
Yes.
You have our consensus on that.
Wonderful. Well, that's, that's my update for you tonight. As always, the committee is very appreciative of council's commitment to affordable housing and your partnership and support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Heather.
All right, I might invite the Economic Development Advisory Board. And I believe Brianna is here. Hello. Yes. If you just want to introduce yourself, Brianna, and.
So I'm Brianna Manfris with Pinnacle Architecture and on the BDAB committee. And so part of the interest in being here today was definitely the permitting presentation and getting an update on that. So a lot of the questions that we had going into it have, were addressed in the presentation, which I think was great. And Melanie Kipler, you hit all the other questions I probably would have come up with on my own. But we just want to stay involved as the committee and continue to hear updates and find ways to communicate to all the developers and designers out there and architects that are submitting. I think a lot of the, like that advisory or how that back and forth happens, I think we can sort of be a conduit in a way of communicating that to a larger group. So wanted to express that. And then the other piece is just that we have finalized the strategic plan with a few minor tweaks to the one that will go forward. And the key areas that we'll carry over are the supporting the provision of housing, continued implementation of the Juniper Ridge Work Plan, assisting new or expanded childcare development and the permitting process. And then we want to request that if, and find out if the council is supportive of BDAB serving as the conveying board for development of the Economic Development Strategic Strategy and Economic Opportunities Analysis. And I think you guys had that out there. I don't know if I need to read.
Just a little bit background. So the Economic Opportunity Analysis is a foundational piece to determine our land need for for jobs. We also have a kind of a companion piece about a housing production analysis. How much land do we need for housing? Same thing on the EOAs, it's called the acronym Economic Opportunity Analysis. And I think that's the request from BDAB is to help oversee that process.
If that's supported, we would just continue to work with everybody here and facilitate what what is desired.
Yes. Everybody's getting yeses.
Yeah. Is there anybody else from our boards, committees, commissions that would want to share their thoughts with council? Online or in the audience? Okay. Just for sake of time, I'm going to just turn your attention, the last one of our quarterly updates was the personal liaison assignment. So Robin sent out this via email and we've highlighted in yellow what's, what's being proposed to be changed. So this is an opportunity to kind of look, negotiate, make sure that that's what you've been assigned to is something you're interested, you're, your schedule that'll allow for you to participate. If not, this would be the time to try to negotiate with each other to say, hey, I'm, I can't do this, could you do this kind of thing? If, if it's looking okay, we can move pretty quickly. But if we want to have more discussion around this, this would be something I would say, could we try to cover it towards the end of the meeting under council action reports? Any highlight, any things right now that just sort of stand out as items of discussion?
I would like to continue with the Affordable Housing Committee. I think that for the last two years, I've actually been the alternate, but.
You're still listed there.
I'm going to be there whether they like it or not, so, okay.
I think the idea is both having Mo and similar to.
Okay, I didn't see it under my own name.
There is the.
Oh, I unders, I missed that part, sorry, thank you. Okay, great. There I am. Have lunch with the fire department again? I know, I completely missed the alternate list. That's where the interesting stuff is. Oh, my goodness, all right.
Okay, and again, if you can kind of absorb it and we can just do another sweep at the end of the meeting to make sure we're on track. And with that, I'm going to introduce Russ Grayson, our chief operating officer, to help set up the next item, which is a council goal item around updating our system development charges. We'll talk about what does that mean? And at this point, this is just information, kind of background to help get us launched. So no, no real, there is one small piece of, or some direction that we're needing from council that we'll cover at the end.
All right, so good evening, mayor and council. Again, Russ Grayson, Chief Operations Officer. I'd like to introduce Sarah Hudson. She is our new senior management analyst that is working with me in the city manager's office. And she will be leading this SDC project and we'll go into that here in a second. So what we want to do is just to give you a brief overview of kind of like a primer of what SDCs are and how they work, just because it's a new topic that we really haven't talked about with council. Sarah will talk about exactly what the project is, the scope, schedule, budget around that. And then there are a couple of things that we just want to ask council about and make sure that we're tracking in the right direction. So what we'd like to do is have at least, the outcome of this is you have a basic understanding of SDCs and how they work and kind of what governs them. Make sure you understand what the project is going to entail and how we're going to interact with the community and stakeholders. Because this is one of the topic that that a lot of people do show interest in, because it has a direct relation to development cost. And then also talk about a couple, we need direction on a couple of quick code updates that we'll talk about here at the end. All right, so I'm going to just start with really, we're going to talk about, we're talking about all the SDCs, all the different system development charges that we're going to be working with, which is transportation, sewer, water and parks. I'm going to use the transportation as the kind of the example here because it's the one that has the most prevalent funding issues. And so just to highlight, this is information that I actually gave at City Club last week on a transportation update around what our funding needs are over the twenty year horizon and what our funding gap is. So the headline there is we've got about a billion dollars worth of funding needed between capital and operations and maintenance. And we're about halfway there with our current revenue sources between what we already have coming in through gas taxes and other, and general fund allocations as well as that geo bond that was passed. And also what we are assuming to get normally from SDC revenue from the transportation world. So there's going to be questions about what is the new SDC? Should we raise it, lower it, things like that as we go through this? But the, if you go to the next slide, when you look at potential funding tools, system development charges are a significant part of the funding tools. They're, you know, we were starting with the biggest slices of that funding pie, which was the first one was the general obligation bond that was passed in in twenty twenty. And now we're going after that next, the next biggest piece was just really system development charges. And then after that, we'll go to the next piece, which is that transportation utility fee, which we'll probably be talking with you later this year. So let me do, I'm going to do a quick primer on what SDCs are. So they're basically, they're, they're called system development charges. They are governed by state statute as well as our BENU municipal code. They're basically one time charges that are assessed to new development. So when you come in and pick up your permit, you pay these fees, basically what we call at the window. And then what they are really intended is to help create a. And then what they are really intended is to help create a funding source for the capital needs for that growth that the city needs to do. So it's really trying to figure out a way for growth to pay their share into the infrastructure system, not only for what they need to do, what Connaught was talking about, building their local roads, but also what about the treatment plant or big improvements to the transportation system? This is one of those funding sources that we have. The system development charges, a critical thing to remember is they can only be used for capital, for new projects, and they have to be related, directly related to growth-related projects. So there is a definite tie that we have to look at when we create these methodologies. We can't, this is not a funding source for operations and maintenance. It's really for how do I build new capital associated with the growth that we're going to be seeing in the city? So again, the categories that we are talking about is we have a system development charge for sewer, for water, for transportation. Parks does their own methodology, but we implement it downtown in terms of assessing the fees and collecting the fees. There is another category by state statute that in theory we could charge SDCs for, and that's in the stormwater world. At this point, we just, as a city, have decided not to pursue that. We are doing an update to our stormwater master plan. It's currently in process. And if, when we start looking at funding around that, that may, or may not be a discussion we want to have with council when we look at potential funding sources for our stormwater system. So how do we do this? I'm going to do this really fast, and we're going to have many touch points with council over the next year around this project. So if there's questions, we can come back. But basically thinking of engineering does their big master plans. It figures out what we need to build over a 20-year planning horizon. Once we get that list of projects, we separate that list of projects out to what can we attribute to growth? And then we take that and put that into a methodology, which is what we're doing right now, to determine how do we come up with that base fee that we're going to charge? And I'll talk about that a little bit. Then we come to council, have policy discussions about, you know, different ways to assess that. How much do we want to assess? That gets adopted through the methodology, get adopted, and the project list will be adopted, as well as the associated fees that go with that. And then we just go through the process of administering that. And then we go through this continuous improvement cycle. Every five years or so, we should update the master plans, which then means we should update the methodology, which, you know, changes the fees. And so we're in that cycle. Many of these were kind of, it's been a little too long. The last time we did the transportation was in 2011. So we really, and we have just updated our transportation system plan. So that's why we have the list of projects. Now we're talking about how do we fund it, and that's why we're here, looking at this project. So when we look at the system development charge, what we look at is two basic things. Is there, do we already build an improvement that has additional capacity for growth that we'd like to get reimbursed for, for that additional capacity? And then also an improvement fee for new capital that needs to be built and associated with growth. Think of the Southeast Interceptor, that big pipe that we built through town that went down 27th. The city basically initiated, put up the original funds for that, but it has enough capacity for the existing flows that are in the pipe, but also additional capacity for new flows with growth. So in theory, we can get reimbursed back through the system development charge for that portion of the pipe that is available for new growth. And then if a new sewer line needs to get constructed, like the later phases of the North Interceptor, we can use SDCs to help pay for that new pipe. And again, we can come back and explain more. I'm just giving you a quick overview, just because we're a little short on time. So how do we, then what does that actually charge due? So the methodology will basically come out with the base rate charge for what we call an equivalent dwelling unit. So think of a single-family house. That's really been the metric that we've used. So really, what it does is it figures out what's the revenue that I need to achieve through all these growth projects? And it's going to spit a number out of, you know, $150, $200 million. Then you divide it by how many equivalent units of growth do we think we're going to get over that planning horizon? And then that'll come out with that $8,000 fee that we're going to charge on a single-family house. That's what the first part of the methodology does. The second part of is, how do we take that fee that we've calculated for a single-family house and then attribute that to all the different development types that we see in the city? Schools, commercial buildings, apartments, grocery stores, an auto dealer. There's different rates, and, you know, so we need to figure out how we want to do that. And our methodology right now is really confusing in terms of how we implement it. We've got way too many categories, and you could be charged one category in the sewer and another category in the water and another category in the transportation, and it just doesn't make sense. We've got two to three staff people that all they do are these calculations and try to figure out how to make it work. Causes a lot of confusion and consternation with our builders, because you're going to see in a minute why, because of the cost. And so we're trying to figure out through this process, is there a way to simplify what we're doing in terms of how we assess these SDCs? Here's just a quick snapshot of the revenue that we get off of system development charges. This is just for the transportation. So if you look back over the past 10 years, you can start to get an idea of what we're getting back in the fees. You can see the breakout between that improvement portion and the reimbursement portion. But what you really want to look at is the total. I think that's the best thing to look at. So from a transportation standpoint, we're talking anywhere, you know, when we were coming out of the recession to $3 to $4 million a year, to now we're collecting somewhere, you know, $8 to $9 million a year in revenue. So it's significant when you think about the overall transportation budget and capital needed for new projects. And why we wanted to basically do, this is a fairly significant project that Sarah is going to go over, is when you start to look at the impact, these are big dollars, right? So when you think of, and I'm only going to each one of these, but why we want to talk, we want to talk about everything holistically. Because really what the development community cares about the most is that right-hand column. So we just don't want to go through the transportation methodology update, have a very robust engagement and conversations with the development community and the general community. And then we do it again with the water and again with the sewer, because, you know, it is now, if you come to pull a permit on a single-family house, you're writing a check to the city for $31,000 before you even put a shovel in the ground. When you get up to the big apartment projects, you know, you're talking $1, $2 million worth of system development charges. It's significant, and it has an impact on whether or not projects move forward or not. But it is also an extremely important revenue source for the city to make sure that we can accommodate that growth both now and well into the future. So I just wanted to get that scale of dollar signs, commas, and zeros that we're talking about, and why this is a very, this is a project that we closely watch by the development community and why we want to make sure that we have the right community engagement around that. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah now, and she's...
Those, the most expensive one in every category except one is Parks SDC, except for mixed use.
That, I'm just going to say that is an accurate observation.
Thank you.
Well, you see, it's zero for restaurants, drive-throughs.
Yeah, but in the residential, in the housing side, that's really where Parks mostly charges is on the housing. And yes, I mean, that's what the numbers say.
Thank you.
So with that now, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, and she's going to talk specifically about what the scope of work is and what we're about to embark in here, embark in the next 12 to 18 months. So Sarah?
Yeah, thank you. So just kind of taking a step back of why are we going through this process? So Russ touched upon this, but, you know, really part of city council goals, action items to update our transportation system development charge methodology, and then also continue those affordable housing initiatives. So the affordable housing exemption will be part of this scope of work. And really, that need to align project lists with our most current master plan. So as Russ was mentioning, our transportation system development charge methodology was last updated in 2011, but 2020 is when we did our transportation system plan update. Likewise, water system development charge methodology was last updated 2008, but last year we updated the integrated water system master plan. So we need to bring those things into alignment so that we're reflecting all those assumptions and conditions. And really going beyond just the transportation system development charge methodology update, including everything at once. There's efficiencies in doing it all at once. So as Russ was saying, having that streamlined discussion with stakeholders, taking that holistic look at the total impact. So again, the developers are going to care about that bottom line, that right-hand column of the last slide, not how much am I getting charged for each of these? So it really makes sense to have that conversation at once. Again, aligning those categories and rate structures, as Russ was saying, they're all kind of done differently. So this is a chance to really look at it in kind of a streamlined, holistic fashion. And then it allows us to coordinate with Bend Park and Rec District at once, too, about things like affordable housing and rate structures. And in terms of project scope, because this is such a big project, we're really going to need consultant support. So that would be for the actual methodology calculation for transportation and water, but also looking at all three city implementation structures of the transportation, water, and sewer, and then having help with the facilitation for the stakeholder group. So we'd really look to involve members of the development community, represent affordable housing, and then also making sure that we're using an equity lens as we do this work. And then in terms of schedule and budget, so our goal is to publish an RFP by the end of this month. That would kick off a competitive award process so that we would really be able to begin the project this fall. And we're really looking at about 12 months of stakeholder engagement because of that heavy public involvement piece, with the idea that we would then implement these updated SDCs by the end of next year, by the end of 2023. And as Russ mentioned, we'd have checkpoints with council all along the way, particularly around policy discussions. Budget has been allocated in each of the three SDC funds. So we're looking at $300,000 total available for this consultant engagement. And then a lot of the work will be internal as well. So we do need to address some municipal code updates. So kind of these imminent sunsets are coming up for subsections of the code. So as it relates to the affordable housing exemption and the childcare facilities exemption, we do recommend extending through the end of next year so that we have this study period to kind of think about how we're going to include it in the project overall. And with that, I'll turn it back to Russ to talk about next steps and where we want some direction.
So we just, at this point, just want to check in with council on a couple of things. And there, as Sarah alluded to, there's going to be many touch points with this, and it's going to be more of, once we get into the methodology and things start to come up, definitely certain that we're going to be coming back in council and saying, you know, we'd like to get some policy direction before we finish up the analysis. So right now, what we're looking at, we just want to make sure we're getting, you know, kind of consensus from council in terms of the stakeholder engagement. What we'd like to do is basically have staff, you know, work with the development communities and other stakeholders, get a list, have that authorization given to Eric as a city manager to create that stakeholder group. That'll be managed by myself and Sarah through the process of this project. The second thing is what Sarah just talked about. We do have two sunsets for the affordable housing and childcare exemption. We will be talking about this in great detail about, you know, do we just want to do an outright exemption for these categories or keep it on a temporary basis as we go through the project? But in the meantime, we'd like to come back and maybe do a code update to the municipal code to extend that through the end of next year. There is also going to be a significant probably update to the municipal code around system development charges that we'll package with this, because there are just some, you know, standard housekeeping things that we need to change and some policy-related things that'll probably get changed through the methodology. So we'll be bringing back later packages, the municipal code with the end of this project. And then, you know, we just want to make sure as we start to kick off with the consultant right now that we're going to, we're starting from the point of, yes, we want to think about keeping those affordable housing and daycare exemptions in the methodology, because then that helps us try to figure out what are the long-term legal parameters around that? And then how do we, then how do we assess that in terms of all the other categories that we're going to go to? Because we're still need to recover that cost. And we need to make sure we can do that both from a legal basis and then the methodology complies with that. So there's that question. We just want to make sure that we're tracking that. We don't think there's going to be any change in your policy there. And is there anything else that you want to, that comes to mind that you just want us to think about while we start to engage with the RFP process and the consultant? It kind of goes into the third bullet point there around, you know, we're already thinking of some things around high-level policy direction that we've heard, especially around all the different housing types that we have and a tiered structure in terms of size or number of bedrooms or, you know, different housing types. Should we be looking at that tiered structure? And what we'd really like to do is make sure that we're in alignment with the Parks and Rec structure, because they already have a tier in theirs, because the worst thing is you can have is we're setting the threshold at 1,000 square feet, and Parks is at, you know, 1,200 square feet. It just becomes an implementation nightmare. So part of that is trying to holistically make sure that we're aligned in how we approach that. And that's the end of our formal presentation.
Should we, do we have any questions, or should we walk through? Do you want to quickly walk through these requested actions and make sure everybody's, are we all okay with the first two, the stakeholder group?
Yes.
I have some feedback on the stakeholder group. I think it would be good to have a council liaison or somebody, one person assigned to keep track and report back to council on that. Might also be a good idea to have a BPRD rep involved in that. I want to see small developers in two senses, people that develop small homes and then smaller companies that do development in Bend that may not have the same resources as a large development company when coming to the table and dealing with these issues or having to pay those upfront costs. And energy-efficient developers as well would be my recommendations to make sure are in the mix there.
And we can decide this at a letter point, too. If you have any suggestions about the council liaison now or any volunteers, we...
Whatever the meeting is going to be.
We are already planning to put Parks and Rec on there. I mean, it's actually reciprocating what Parks did when they did their methodology. We were sitting at the table as well, so we will definitely do that. And if there is a council liaison that wants to be a liaison, we will take that information.
Okay.
I'm interested, too, so. You have options.
Okay.
And then on the childcare, it's just simply we need to bring back a code change to get that extension to buy us a little more time as we work through all these issues. I'm assuming you're okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, it was calculated in the methodology, for sure.
For sure.
Okay.
Yes.
And then just that high level, like I've been hearing discussion from council about really incentivizing more affordable housing, that tiered system. And this is just a checkpoint to say, we're still there, right? And so that's... Yeah. Okay.
One thing that we got some feedback on that I've also heard before is around the timing of when they're charged and when they're collected. So I think that should be part of the discussion as well. But the main emphasis is like having a smarter system that recognizes different impacts of different sizes of housing and even, you know, energy efficiency and things like that. So I think that's...
And to a quick response to, we are aware of the letter that came in from the chamber, and that's definitely in the world of discussion in terms, you know. And so that's kind of like the third phase. That's more of the municipal code. How do we actually want to process? So think of like, we got to get the base numbers figured out first. And how do we implement it across all the cost categories? And then how do we just actually run the process? It is a complicated process. There's a lot of different permutations of how these things work. And so that's in the municipal code. So that's where, how we collect and when we collect will come into play.
Okay. Thank you.
Getting us on, back on track on our schedule.
Okay. And our last presentation will be delivered virtually by Assistant City Attorney Elizabeth Oshel and Joshua Romero, Assistant Communications Director. So this is really a follow-up from the discussion we had at the June 15th council work session, which really helped to just sort of frame the unsanctioned camping code work that's in front of us and give you kind of some legal context of that work, which we will go over really briefly today as a reminder. And then really what we are looking for today from council, some direction on public engagement. And so Joshua is going to walk you through some options for consideration. I think I'm turning this over to Joshua first.
Yes, thank you, Eric. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Josh Romero, Assistant Communications Director for the City of Bend, and I'm joined by Elizabeth Oshel, our Assistant City Attorney. Tonight, we're seeking council's direction on an unsanctioned camping code project plan, really to outline what the education and outreach plan will be for this project. To get us started, I'd like to review an agenda for this plan. As Eric mentioned, the objective for tonight is really to get direction on what community education and outreach will look like for this work. We don't need direction on policy decisions tonight. But as Eric said, Elizabeth will give an overview and recap of what was discussed at the June 15th council work session to give you a sense of the questions that will need to be answered in this process so you can make a decision around what the education and outreach plan will look like. So we'll start off with a recap of what was covered in the June 15th work session, the initial direction we got from council about bringing some options for a process for developing this code. Then Elizabeth will go over some of the policy questions related to developing the code and what that process might look like. And then we'd like council's direction on what the community education outreach and input plan looks like. So really, the decision tonight is to confirm a process and timeline for what education and outreach looks like. So with that, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth, or excuse me, let me do the recap of what we discussed at the June 15th work session, and then we'll go to Elizabeth. So one of the things that council directed us to do is look at an option for a city manager-appointed working group, and with that working group, to include a diverse set of perspectives and to really focus on some objectively reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions around unsanctioned camping codes. They also wanted to make sure that we have community education outreach and input opportunities throughout the development of the code, and then make sure that council considered some community feedback before adopting any proposed code. So now with that, I'll go and turn it over to Elizabeth to sort of recap what some of the policy questions are that will need to be answered during this process.
Thank you, Joshua. Good evening, council. So I really just want to take some time quickly to, again, set the sort of box or framework that we will, this process will be making decisions within. And to start with, this is the general rule about regulating camping or what options a city has to regulate camping, coming from the Martin v. Boise case and state statutes and state law in Oregon. So that general rule is that you can't cite a person for sleeping in public when there are no shelter beds available. So that general rule is that you can't cite a person for sleeping in public when there are no shelter beds available for that person. So that's sort of our general policy overarching principle. And underneath that come all of the questions that will need to be answered through this process. One option, just right off the bat, is within that framework, you can prohibit camping throughout the city without enforcement built into the code of no enforcement against people who do not have access to a shelter. And you can also build in exceptions in times of extreme weather or other instances when it may not be appropriate to enforce an outright prohibition on camping. Whether or not you start from that premise of an outright prohibition on camping, you can regulate the, what the legal term calls the time, place and manner of camping in public. And so these would be regulations that would set forth when, where and how camping could be limited or allowed, whether or not you have that overarching framework of a total camping ban with limited enforcement or not. And so those time, place and manner questions are likely to be the bulk of the policy questions to be answered through this process. Examples of policy considerations for when to limit camping, we've seen, we've looked at a lot of other codes from cities all across the West Coast within the Ninth Circuit governed by Martin v. Boise and elsewhere. Camping could be limited or allowed only at nighttime hours. So for example, 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM. You could allow daytime camping if a person is working overnight. Sometimes we see that in codes. You could allow camping, or campsites that have been set up overnight to, to remain during the day if they comply with those how regulations, those manner restrictions we'll get to. You could have a length of stay limit in any particular place. And each of these questions raises, you know, questions about enforcement, resources and staff time. How does it look to enforce a morning cleanup hour or durational limit? Or really any of these questions, what is the staff resources to, to implement that restriction? The second question in the time, place and manner is place, where to prohibit camping. Some considerations and some codes we've seen elsewhere identify certain areas where camping is never allowed regardless of the time or manner. This could be specific zones, this could be near certain uses, for example, near other shelters, near schools, et cetera. There's the opportunity to decide city-owned parking lots, are those available for camping or not? And then really narrowing in and specify what city-owned property not open to the public is not appropriate for camping. And you see this, like our water infrastructure and other sites. And finally, the manner questions. These are how can camping occur, when and where it is allowed? These are what types of structures would be allowed? Are these only tents or only sort of fabric movable structures? What size of camp is allowed, both, you know, the extent of property in one location, but also the number of tents at one location? Do we want to regulate how items may be stored? Does everything have to be within the structure or tent? Or can there be things within a certain size area? And then there's regulations about environmental and public safety, such as a camp can't dump gray water, wastewater or sewage into the right of way or on the public property. Fires have to be in compliance with Bend fire guidelines. We have no open fires, for example. And then we can have general restrictions setting out, you know, how does an encampment or a campsite have to be maintained? So those are the basic examples of certain time, place and manner questions that will come up through this process and that will hopefully be answered through code at the end of this. Other decisions that may need to be made throughout this process is, are we regulating vehicle camping? Are those regulations, those time, place and manner restrictions the same or different from tent camping or more movable structure camping? If you recall, state law has a required notice of 72 hours before a city removes an established campsite. We have the opportunity to define what, when does under city code a campsite become established so that a 72-hour notice would be required prior to removal? And then again, the question of defining what city property is open to the public or is open to camping. So those are not all the questions or all the options that will be on the table, but that is definitely the flavor of what this process will, will need to grapple with and need to answer. Back to you, Joshua.
All right. Thank you, Elizabeth. So as Elizabeth outlined, there are a lot of big policy-related questions that will need to be answered as part of developing this unsanctioned camping code. So with that, we've prepared a couple of options for council to consider for the education and outreach plan. And what these options do is really provide council with an option that is really council-directed in terms of how the code is developed. And then the option that reflects council's request for staff to provide a proposal that utilizes the working group. So if we look at the education and outreach options, there are some things I want to note about both options. First off, there's an informational webpage, it's already set up on the city's website under our houselessness work. And that webpage will have information about this project as a project proceeds. That information will be updated regularly with either option for outreach and education. Similarly, we'd include regular updates via city communications channels like our monthly newsletter, our podcast on social media, et cetera. So all that's accounted for as regular outreach would do for a project like this and is not called out specifically in the options that will be presented to you tonight. In either option, if staff are available to talk to community groups, those could be supplements to the education and outreach, but that's really dependent on staff time availability and which community groups would want staff to present at them and when. And so it really is a matter of balancing priorities, but just know that that option is there for staff to go out into the community beyond what's in these proposals. And the really big thing that I want to highlight about these two options that will be presented to you tonight is they both assume best-case scenarios. As we have seen with some of this work in the past, timelines can often shift based on needs of a working group or based on informational needs of those who are working on developing recommendations for code. And so it's important to realize that these timelines are very optimistic and that they assume there are no additional meetings or work that needs to be done to get to the timelines for council to adopt a code. So let's start off with option one. This option is really a council-directed option, meaning that council will direct a lot of the staff work in developing draft code for consideration. So where we are today is getting a direction from council on what this process could look like. If council chooses option one, then staff would be drafting code based on council's direction. And then later in the month, we'd hold a hybrid community education open house with a Q and A opportunity for community members. The idea here being that we can share a lot of the information that Elizabeth has already shared in the previous work session on June 15th and recap tonight to really help the community understand the legal framework that we're working within in developing a code like this. And then in September, once there is a draft code available, it would be an opportunity for community feedback on those recommendations. We're suggesting sort of a unique tool that was recently added to the updated council rules, and that's the use of a council roundtable with city councils advisory groups. What that would do is that would allow us to compress some input from council's advisory groups plus some of the diverse perspectives that council asked us to consider in the development process for the code. And we'll talk a little bit later about those groups that are identified to participate in the roundtable. And then at the end of September, based on the feedback received through that roundtable discussion, revisions to the code would be made with the opportunity for council to vote potentially on the camping code in October. So highlights from this option is that it would complete the process of developing the code by the end of October. Again, a very optimistic timeline, assuming there are no additional meetings or need for information or the drafting process does not get extended. This option does not include a working group. That is part of sort of streamlining the time that it takes to complete developing the code by October. And it really focuses on community input being provided directly to council to direct staff on developing the code. The one thing I do want to mention too, as we transition from option one to option two, is both options actually include the same amount of opportunity for education prior to the draft code being presented to council. And it also offers the opportunity for community feedback to council on the draft code prior to adoption to the code. So the level of community engagement and education for both options is the same. So with that, let's take a look at option two and what that looks like. Essentially, what it does is it adds two months to the timeline for developing the code. And what that additional timeline is for is to accommodate the work of a working group. So July stays the same, seeking council direction on what the process looks like. August is very front-loaded with an appointment of a city manager-appointed working group. That working group would have a first meeting at some time in August to really get an overview of the project and the legal framework, very similar to what Elizabeth presented tonight. We'd also hold towards the end of the month, the community education open house and Q and A, and then go to city advisory committees. So one thing to point out with this option is advisory committees, because there's not sort of a consolidated roundtable opportunity, it would allow us the time to give advisory committees the opportunity to learn about this work and also to provide recommendations to council on the proposed code. In September, the working group would develop camping code recommendations. With city staff, we'd go back to advisory committees and be able to share progress on developing that code. In October, once there's a draft code available for review by the community, we'd solicit feedback from the community on those recommendations, make revisions to those codes and present them once again to advisory committees. And then in November, there'd be a council work session to review the proposed code. And then December, ideally, council would be able to vote on those code proposals. Again, completing the process in December, being very optimistic about the timeline and that assumes that the working group or advisory committees don't request more time to review and make recommendations on the code. And the schedule, as we point out there, can often stretch with working groups in particular just based on informational needs they may have or time that they may need to draft code that adequately addresses the questions being proposed. The benefit of this is it does include the working group that council requested staff to make a proposal on, but it does extend the timeline by at least two months. And so the last piece I sort of wanted to touch on is sort of that roundtable format and the working group format. So when we look at the roundtable, the roundtable would include the diverse representation that city council was requesting, which includes those groups that's still on the screen, city advisory groups, community and business groups, people who have experienced homelessness, our local service providers and other public service agencies. That roundtable sort of looks a little bit different when we look at option two, where advisory groups are kind of pulled out and are able to sort of have those discussions within their current advisory committee format. But then we really sort of consolidate the other members of this roundtable representation into the working groups. And so folks like the community and business groups, those who have experienced houselessness, service providers and public agencies would be rolled into the working group. And so kind of our first question of looking at who needs, or the direction we're wanting from council tonight is what option for the public education outreach plan should staff move forward with? Option one, which is really council directing staff to revise code, it would be staff providing community education and Q and A opportunity and then providing the community with an opportunity to be the feedback before council works to adopt a code. Option two would really be collaborating with a working group, staff in a working group, and then include a public outreach and education with an opportunity for input once again before council adopts a code. So I think I'll stop there before we go to Elizabeth's question just so we can get a sense of council's interest between those two options for the public education and outreach plan.
All right, council, who would like to kick this off?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm option one and for a few reasons. One is that I think that the timeline for option two is really aspirational. And I think this is something that our city and our community really wants to see happen as, as quickly as possible. Second, I think that in option one, there's sort of, there's an opportunity for direct public input, both on the sort of education side at the beginning and then the feedback with something reacting, something to react to afterwards. And I think that's, that's really appealing. And I also think that this roundtable, which is, which is new for us in our, in our council rules, is a really great opportunity and would achieve almost the same thing and I think even better than a working group would. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, and just to add a little bit of flavor to the roundtable idea and concept for the public, even though I think we're familiar with it from our council rules, even though we haven't had one yet, is I think there would be some opportunity or a lot more opportunity for back and forth rather than just, you know, the public giving us input. And we, you know, we absorb that, but we don't have a chance to respond to it, to respond to questions. And that's something that I think from previous processes, you know, around our shelter code, for example, that people were really wanting, that we weren't able to provide. And so I see this as a, as a good way to do that.
Yep.
Others?
Yeah, option one, and I, I would like as much, I know it's sort of, you know, time permitting, as much as, as many opportunities with neighborhood groups, with community groups for staff to go out and just present on kind of the baseline what this policy is and what can and can't be done with it. The more we can do that, the better. And I agree with being able to have a more, more of a dialogue with direct input to council instead of having it filter through another group to us.
I also like option one, my, I guess maybe a challenge in that, Joshua, is, and everybody, is making sure that those roundtables are equitable in their nature in the sense of like how we connect with people in the community, not just people who have like four hours after, after a nine to five workday, let's say. Like we have a diverse range of people with different work schedules and parenting needs and all that stuff. So somehow like diversifying the roundtable process, which might need more time from us, but okay. So we do that and so that we can connect with all members of the community or, or more, especially members of the community who historically aren't heard or have the accessibility to be heard. So just making sure that that roundtable process can keep that framework.
I like option one as well. I am wondering about opportunities to hear from the police in building this policy. I was looking at something, someone's home, is it reasonably tidy? Oh, the police do not want to have to try and decide whether something is reasonably tidy, you know? So making sure we have that voice.
And just to let council know, we have an internal steering committee that includes many city departments, law enforcement, public rights of way, those that manage the roads and things, code enforcement, et cetera. But yes, definitely as part of the process, as we come up with policy options, you'll, you'll hear from multiple. And we talk about enforcement, one of the questions that Elizabeth asked, you know, who's best positioned in enforcement and how and all those things? So, yeah.
Good. And then the other on option one, and I could just be mistaken about this, but it seemed like, I, I like the idea of taking advantage of the advisory committees that we already have. I feel like especially human rights and equity is the commission that we have already built and have people and to, you know, use those. The other one I'm thinking of is affordable housing advisory, but they're awfully busy. So, you know, I say that, but they already have work they're doing. So, you know, both of those things.
Funny, you should mention that. I was actually going to ask for some consensus from council tonight about creating a subcommittee slash working group, I guess a permanent subcommittee slash working group of, of the affordable housing committee on houselessness. You know, it's time, I think, that we stop sort of reacting to, you know, now we need to talk about this, now we need to talk about it, and actually have a group that is, you know, has balanced perspectives, is, you know, that can be really involved in providing input and really dig deep into, to houselessness. And, you know, as it relates to specifically obviously housing and camping and that. But have, have like a more permanent group underneath the affordable housing committee.
Is that separate from, you know, option one or is that?
It is separate, yes. This is separate. The idea is that this is, this, this group is, is there. You know, there, this group is there to really dig deep in a comprehensive way and, you know, as, as things come up and really be like the, the, you know, the informed group that can go back to their communities and then, and, and, you know, really talk about the things that council's doing.
And my suggestion, if council's interested in that approach, is, you know, we, we've got a lot of work to do with this code. And from that, I think with the roundtable, that could be a natural outgrowth of that roundtable is really turning that into something more permanent, right?
Identifying, yeah.
Yeah. Might be part of that, because I think as we've learned, the community is very passionate about this topic. And instead of, as Councilor Perkins mentioned, having more, more of a systemic way to, for engagement on all things related to houselessness and, and so in the affordable. And, and so in the affordable housing advisory committee, we've been structuring our department, we've created a housing department with divisions that focus on houselessness, on deed restricted affordable housing, and then we're soon to build out middle income housing as part of that. So the intent is to replicate that structure from a community engagement perspective and having potentially subcommittees on middle housing, houselessness, in addition to our extending affordable housing advisory committee as that overarching group as, as something for, worth considering. So I think, yeah, just looking for council interest in exploring that.
Yeah. I just, as long as it's not something that's going to predicate this into the timeline back, that's the only thing.
But perhaps next time we have a process that we need to go through related to houselessness, we'll already have a working.
A more built-in kind of working group, yeah.
You know, not have to put a group together before we can start a process.
So I want to make sure for option one, which I understand with the timeline works a lot better, that council understands for the policy decisions, the way it would work in order for the roundtables to be effective, the community needs to have something to react to. You all understand that, that for the time, place and manner, it wouldn't necessarily be code, it would probably be more, whether it's bullets or charts or some sort of way to view your policy choices. We would be bringing that to you, and we're talking like in August, which, you know, fairly quickly with, we've already gotten some feedback internally from police and streets and code enforcement, but we'll go ramp that up. I mean, right now, your schedule is work sessions, so they would probably be perhaps longer work sessions to, to go over with you, what do you think about these various time, place and manner areas where we need your feedbacks? I'm just.
Yeah, and I think.
Making sure you're like, yeah, yeah, we're in this with you.
So what it probably, what it means is.
I'm on my own vacation.
You're going to see a standing, basically a standing work session item between now and October, probably on this topic, so at each meeting. So I think that's just.
Maybe needing to start a little earlier, because some of them are going to need you all to like grapple with kind of hard questions. These are not easy. We've already dealt with that internally with differing points of view. Some of them, they're just tough. These are hard issues.
I think it makes sense.
Doable.
In terms of like, it sounds like we're all kind of here for that. And, and I think that the, you know, in, in cases like this where they're really hard decisions, to me, it makes sense to have the people who were elected, you know, by voters, making, you know, really grappling with those decisions rather than a work group and then kind of filtering that through, just to have, I think we're all, you know, nodding that we're, we're ready to be engaged in those discussions, so.
Agreed.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm just, they take some time sometimes to think through. And, and one thing we've already decided, like to give you examples, like what are other cities, not that you have to copy every city, but to know, like what are the models out there? That's something we'll be providing for you.
And hopefully that will also help the community kind of understand what, what's the universe we're working within, what are the decisions that we actually are, are making and can make, rather than like, you know, the community coming back and saying, we want you to do this. And we say, well, we legally can't do that. You know, the courts have said we cannot do that, so.
I think that leads into the next, so thank you for that feedback, just reiterate, option one. And then I think as part of that, we need just some touchpoints with council to help us ensure that we're prepping you all, so we're not talking about substantively asking for like a council subcommittee, this is just more of a, a place for staff to help frame the issue for the full council, because this will take full council involvement. So looking for some direction there, volunteers.
I think probably for the, just kind of the timeframe management, it would make most sense for myself and Mayor Proton Brodmann to, to kind of handle that, the scheduling piece.
Then I, I was just going to suggest maybe Councilor Perkins on more substantive issues related to houselessness, given that liaison role that Councilor Perkins currently plays with the collaborative office and all things related houselessness.
Thank you, Councilor Perkins. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Absolutely. I'm just sitting with this, and this is also because I'm brand new, so, you know, why not? So it's interesting to ask these questions without a perspective of systems thinking, because I'm thinking, hey, we're a city within a county and a state, right? So is there a way to sort of, I'm just wondering if, in, in the sense of like public education and, and trying to make sure the communication is open and clear, like have other partners there at these roundtables, like as an invitation?
Other public agencies.
That's, that's exactly the intent. Yep, yep.
Okay, because we're inviting them and we're hoping that they show up.
Yes.
And if they don't, that's notable.
Right. For example, parks, you know, camping is already not allowed in parks.
Right.
That code will go away, so there'll be a new code.
A new code that would, yes.
So that would be a question for us, for you all to talk about. That will be something that, because there will, camping will be regulated in a, in its own code.
We are the ones who decide whether, it was council is the one who decides whether camping is allowed in parks?
In public, on public property.
Any public.
On any public property. Parks has their own rules, so we don't decide those. But for public property, that will be in the code that we're proposing.
I'm confused by that answer.
Me too.
Our current code does say no camping in, in parks.
Yes, and it would be confusing to deal with camping in a section of the code that deals only with parks and then have a camping code that is now going to be a camping code. So everything will be rolled into just a camping section of the code, which will deal with public rights of way and public property. Because that's kind of a standalone oddly placed section of the code, so just kind of.
But, yeah, but to, to clarify then, also, I mean, so you'll have irrigation districts or ODOT that are public property, but then they also have their own governance structures. So there's, there's an overlay, which we don't have control over.
Yeah, we're not proposing to override those and how they regulate their own property, we wouldn't override it. But we won't, we don't want, if anybody wants to know, how do you camp from the municipal code, we want it to be in one place. We don't want it to be in different pieces of our municipal code, that's too confusing.
But whatever we say, they could come in with a rule saying no camping in parks.
Correct.
Whether or not it's, it's spelled out in our code.
Correct.
Got it. Thanks. All right.
All right. Well, I think we've got the direction that we need. All right. Just, Elizabeth, I want to, you popped on screen, are we good from your perspective? Okay.
Yes, thank you, just stopping sharing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Right?[1062.72]
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Bend City Council. We're going to start with our roll call, which is now just our introductions of ourselves. So Counselor Keebler, please go ahead.
Sure, Counselor Melanie Keebler. My pronouns are she and her.
Counselor Steven Segal, my pronouns are he and him.
Megan Perkins, she/her.
Mayor Jenna Goodman Campbell, she/her.
Mo Mitchell, they/she.
Mark Campbell, she/her.
And Mayor Pro Tem Brodmann is excused. Now, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance or a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Campbell will do the land acknowledgement tonight.
The Bend City Council would like to thank the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs for offering this land acknowledgement for us to read during our meetings. We encourage everyone watching to learn about the indigenous people whose homelands we occupy. We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River, is the original homelands of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of 1855 while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wana Llama, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note the Clamath Trail ran north through this region to the great Salilo Falls trading grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land, and it is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land.
Counselor Campbell. Tonight, under good of the order, we have an update on temporary housing strategies from Counselor Perkins.
Earlier tonight, councilors heard about the parameters with which the city is able to develop a camping code to better regulate where, when, and how unsanctioned camping can happen on city rights of way. We're starting down the path of developing code, and you'll hear more about what that could look like and the many different ways that you can provide input over the summer and into the fall. In the meantime, we actually have a lot to celebrate. Our strategies to address houselessness include increasing shelter capacity and supporting services that people need to get back on their feet and into stable housing. You may recall hearing about a proposal by Central Oregon Villages to pursue a temporary outdoor shelter at 27th Street and Bear Creek Road. In June, councilors approved a $45,300 contract with Central Oregon Villages to perform community outreach and engagement, apply to the city for approval of site improvements and shelter buildings under state legislation known as HB 2006, and refine the site plan for a temporary outdoor pallet shelter at Desert Stream Church. As part of the city's Phase 1 contract with Central Oregon Villages, on July 14th, the organization held an open house to gather information from the neighborhood and address their concerns. Every table was full. At the event, Central Oregon Villages shared drafts of their village handbook, which is a code of conduct, and a proposed good neighbor agreement. Central Oregon Villages requested feedback and recommendations on the documents. We'll review and incorporate feedback and will report back to the council in the coming months. We want to thank our community for your input. Another exciting step towards solutions is the opening of the Lighthouse Navigation Center, an innovative and responsive approach to addressing the challenges facing our community. The Navigation Center, a program of Shepherd's House on Northeast 2nd Street, is a service hub where multiple providers meet with clients in a single accessible location. The Lighthouse Navigation Center ribbon-cutting celebration took place on July 12th and was well-attended by many supportive community members. In addition to sheltering an average of 95 people per night in June, just want to repeat that, 95 people per night in June, the Lighthouse Navigation Center enrolled 60 people in its day program, which includes individualized case management, skill building, breakfast and lunch. Shepherd's House is partnering with several resource providers, including Mosaic Medical, Deschutes County Behavioral Health, Thrive, Reach, St. Charles, St. Vincent de Paul, Family Kitchen, Bethlehem Inn, the Peaceful Presence Project, and others to help clients obtain permanent housing, health, and stability. This collaborative approach by service providers to meeting the needs of our houses' community is truly to be applauded. Fifteen people served by Shepherd's House transitioned to more permanent housing in June. That's exactly what we all want to see and look forward to more success in finding stable housing in the future. The Franklin Avenue Shelter, formerly the Rainbow Motel, which the city bought earlier this year, has 24 rooms and is being used by 43 people at the last count, including households with children. Reach is providing case management, Family Kitchen delivers meals, and Neighbor Impact manages daily operations, providing stable and supportive services for families in need. Once again, evidence that collaboration makes a difference. The Rainbow Site is in temporary use as a shelter while the city renovates the Division Street Shelter, formerly the Bend Value Inn. Renovations on the Division Street Shelter are ongoing. Remember that the Division Street Shelter was a motel that the city purchased with state funds known as Project Turnkey. The goal is to create emergency shelter units, and we anticipate this being a 28-room low-barrier shelter. The city has a contract with Neighbor Impact to operate it when it's ready. And finally, we want to acknowledge the significant progress by St. Vincent de Paul on their new housing program. At the end of June, St. Vincent de Paul held a two-day open house for their new housing program that includes a 10-unit village right behind St. Vincent de Paul in Southeast Bend. It was expected to open back in March but was set back due to supply issues. The village has 10 sleeping units and a community building with bathrooms, showers, laundry, and a kitchen. 10 adult men and women are expected to move in August. I had a chance to tour this facility and meet with the staff, and it's a true achievement and an important step in our shared goal of creating temporary housing in Bend. So as you can see, many important steps in the city's strategic plan to prevent and end houselessness are actually becoming a reality. We want to acknowledge the collaboration of our service providers as we expand capacity and work together to provide essential services like food, medical, government assistance, showers, behavioral health support, and so much more. It is truly making a difference, and we thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Right, item four is the visitor section. We have two commenters signed up in person. Do we have anybody virtually? Okay, if you, those listening in virtually on Zoom, you may make a comment by raising your Zoom hand and/or by joining by phone. And do, we just want to remind everybody that our council rules do not dictate, you know, what you can or can't say, but we expect everybody to kind of conduct themselves in a respectful manner, address us as a body rather than individually, and refrain from making discriminatory, offensive, or otherwise kind of disruptive comments. If I hear those comments, I do, as a chair, have the ability to interrupt you and ask you to please pause your comments. I will explain the rule that's been broken and then allow you to continue. So with that, we'll have two minutes for each speaker, and we'll start with Christine Thompson. Oh, you can come up here to the mic, and your time will be up on the screen, so you can watch that.
I just wanted to tell the council about an unfortunate situation that we were in last week. We came home from vacation to a homeless camp setup, houseless camp setup, right in front of our house. We border a park, so they were using part of the park as their own personal space. They had dogs tied up to trees that, along the sidewalk, and so anyways, well, they started jacking up their trailer and setting it on concrete blocks. They set up a generator in the park right beside our house, 20 feet from our living room window. It was hot. We couldn't open our windows because it was so loud, and there was smoke billowing, and the campers had two dogs that were constantly charging and barking at people trying to use the park and the sidewalk. There was a couple instances where the police were called. People stopped using the park for exercise. You know, we have neighbors that regularly walk the loop. When they finally left, they left their garbage all over. They left a propane tank right by our fence. They used the grass as their own personal bathroom. It was, it was just an ugly situation, and I guess we also want to say, we don't, it's not necessarily, we... I have empathy for their situation, but not so much when it's right in front of you, you know? Like when they're, they're not, they also don't have empathy for the people around them. So that's where I feel it's kind of, it's a sticky situation, and it was really a confusing situation for us not knowing the rules around that, and they were very hard to find online. And we finally got a good lesson in that when, you know, police came, finally park people came and told her she had to get all of the things back in her camper, and then that finally got uncomfortable enough for her, and then she left. It was also a confusing situation with the business days for the 72 hours, so. And I think I know that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, now we have Sandra Walker.
Hello. I'm not terribly prepared here, but I do want to say that it is exciting to hear that the council and the city of Bend in coordination with community resources have done so much. Of course, we know we've grown so much, and this, the plate, our Bend is so big, and it's going to take a lot more. And I think one of the most important things is we're going to have to come up, we, come up with some clear-cut rules that everybody understands. The police, the community, the people who are in a bad situation, homeless. I also live in the same neighborhood as Christine, and it was very... If my children, who are very well-grown up now, very, but if they'd have been small, I would have been, first of all, a little bit concerned about their safety. And secondly, and not just, not because people were homeless, it was the behavior. And secondly, I really don't think I'd want my kids watching people defecating across the street from us, out in the open, and... Again, I have, when I first saw the situation and the people moving in, I thought, I did, I felt bad, and I've been around situations and people and worked with people who are in terrible situations like that. But I don't see that some, sometimes I see that they're not respecting the neighborhood they're temporarily camping in, and, and I don't know, I read this, it's the... Is this Bend's, or this is a pattern after Hermiston's?
Oh, thank you, Sandra. You're out of time, but I really appreciate, yeah, and you can send us that via email.
Thank you.
Do we have any virtual callers?
We do not have any callers at the moment.
Thank you, Kayla.
And I do want to thank both of you for your comments and let you know that we, the, I heard both of you kind of emphasizing the need for clear rules, and that's what we're embarking on right now with our process around determining, you know, kind of how, when, and where people can camp. So we aren't able to completely outlaw camping. We're looking to put some clearer rules around it, so, thank you. All right, item five.
Is there some, I'm so sorry. Did you want to speak?
Oh, okay.
I saw someone come in late.
Yes, I think we just need you to, is that, is that all right with everybody?
We can have you fill out a slip afterwards.
That's what I saw, was that she even has this.
Oh, yes, bring it up, please. Oh, and I, yeah. It's okay, you can fill it out after. And also, I forgot to ask other commenters, please introduce yourself, tell us your name, please, and whether or not you live in the city of Bend.
Sure. My name is Candy Fryboth. I do live in Bend. I too reside in the same neighborhood. I'm a social worker here in town, working with high-risk families, so I applaud you guys and all the hard work you're doing to get all the programs that assist these families. It breaks my heart that there are so many people in situations like this. But I'm actually here to speak on behalf of the safety of my kids, my neighbors. There have been recently two encampments in our neighborhood where unfortunately the folks that were living in these vehicles were hostile, hostile to us, and I'm not able to enjoy my park. I walk there daily with my dogs, and I cannot do that because they have aggressive dogs or they're volatile to us as we're in that park, and so I've avoided the park. Until recently, I tried to go back again, and then there was a new encampment, and thought it was a friendly couple, saw a cage of bunnies out front, and I was like, oh, okay, maybe there's some kids here, you know, I don't know what's going on, and unfortunately, there weren't. I didn't see any kids, but the aggressive dogs and the unpleasantness coming. So I too want to help out those families, but there needs to be rules about what's allowed, and because we need to feel safe in our community, safe in our neighborhoods, and rules just need to be set, unfortunately, and so, and I wouldn't mind seeing if it's possible, if there's, and I'm not sure if it exists, if there is some community volunteers or a program that comes along when we know about encampments at certain places, that they're visited and they're, they're connected with resources, and they're asked about what their plans are for the next day or the week after that, but to know that somebody is passing along the message that, you know, you can stay here, but you can't stay here for very long, hon. Let's connect you to resources. But someone's touching base with those families and seeing what their needs are and seeing if they're aware of what's available in our communities, because a lot of these guys don't. They're just passing through, but unfortunately, there are some that make it very unpleasant for the neighbors who live there in that pod, so thank you. Thank you all for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we will consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Counselor Campbell and Counselor Keebler. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. All right, item six.
This is the first reading of an ordinance to allow an extension for a right-of-way vacation for Sullivan Street between northeast Revere Avenue and northeast Quimby Avenue.
Yeah, go ahead, Karen. This is just an extension of it, but Karen will provide more information.
Okay, so this is actually an extension of a time approval for an ordinance that was adopted by the council. Okay, so this is actually an extension of a time approval for an ordinance that was adopted by the council in 2020. And because we've had some turnover in council members, I'll just give a little bit of a background. This right-of-way that was approved to be dedicated is directly south of Revere Avenue between Quimby and Revere, between Third Street and Lidle Street, about 100 feet east of Lidle Street. As you can see, it's undeveloped.
Your map is not showing, if you don't mind sharing your screen.
Okay, sorry about that. Let's try that again. Okay, does everybody see it now?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So it is immediately south of Revere Avenue between Lidle Street and Third Street, just north of Quimby. It's about 100 feet east of Lidle Street. It is undeveloped. There was quite a bit of rock outcropping in there as well. There is a portion at the very north that was used as an access for the treatment center at the corner of Lidle Street and Revere Avenue. And the applicant worked with that applicant, with that property owner to realign and expand their parking lot to the south so that there would only be a parking lot access to Lidle Street for that, for that property. And so that was worked out. And then this was the site plan that was presented as what the applicant would be consistent with when they submitted their site plan review application. And as you can see, there is the existing Bend Treatment Center in the northwest corner that would remain. And this is, would only include the three potential building sites. But the area to be vacated would retain a 10-foot wide pedestrian bike and pedestrian and bike easement to allow for that continued low-stress network that is shown on the TSP for Second Street. And the gas station and the bank along Third Street are not part of the, were not part of the proposal. So that's the background. And this is actually from the corner of Lidle Street and Quimby, looking northeast from that intersection. And so that was a proposal that, perspective drawing that the applicant submitted to show that if that right-of-way vacation was approved, here's the type of site plan review application that would be submitted. And this came from their pre-application meeting. And then the ordinance that was adopted included three conditions that had to be fulfilled within one year. That they paid the appraised value of that right-of-way area, $95,000, that they record that 10-foot wide bicycle and pedestrian easement, and then that they submit a site plan review application that's consistent with that conceptual plan and that that land use decision was approved by the city, all within one year. And so as I mentioned, this all started in 2020. And the applicant requested a one-year extension that's allowed in code for any approvals that are only effective for one year. And so we administratively approved that one-year extension. But for the next year extension, because it was written into the ordinance in ordinance 2377, we needed to come back to you for an approval for that subsequent year extension. Doesn't require a public hearing, but it does require action by the, by the city council. So it will extend the approval to September 2023. This is just done in advance of that deadline of September 4th, 2022, to make sure that we have the effective date before that deadline. And then the other two conditions remain the same, the payment of the appraised value and the 10-foot bicycle pedestrian easement. And so the new ordinance condition is that that original ordinance is amended to fulfill, that the applicant must fulfill their conditions by September 24th, 2023. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
For a motion. I move for the first reading of the ordinance to modify the approval of the Second Street vacation between Revere Avenue and Quimby Avenue.
Second.
Okay, Councillor Perkins, I'm giving the second to Councillor Segal. All those in favor? Please say aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, item seven, please.
Item seven, this is the first reading of an ordinance granting an non-exclusive franchise agreement to Blue Mountain Networks LLC.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. I'm Robyn Jones, Central Services Manager. Blue Mountain Networks is an unsubsidized rural broadband service provider and telephone company. The company Blue Mountain Networks is comprised of Hermiston-based Eastern Oregon Telecom and Hood River Gorge Networks. Both of these companies have been in business for more than 22 years. Blue Mountain serves more than 29 communities with fiber to the home, including every community in the two least densely populated counties in Oregon. Their current customer base is more than 10,000 people and they are in the process of bringing residential and commercial services to the Bend market. This is a new agreement with Blue Mountain Network and has a franchise fee of 7%. The initial term of the agreement is for 10 years with a five-year renewal option.
Questions, counsel? Great, for motion.
I move for the first reading of an ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Blue Mountain Networks LLC.
Second.
Councillor Campbell and Councillor Segal, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you, Robyn.
Thank you.
All right, item eight, please.
This is asked to authorize an agreement with the State of Oregon Department of State Lands for the city's acquisition of 20 acres of land in the Stevens Road tract for development of affordable housing.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Elizabeth Oshel, Assistant City Attorney. I will pull my presentation up. And that's it. So I am here tonight to present to you a series of agreements with the State of Oregon through the Department of State Lands. This is a set of agreements that stems from House Bill 3318, which you heard about at several recent meetings to adopt a concept plan. House Bill 3318 was approved in the 2021 legislative session. It's a unique approach adopted by the legislature to craft a sort of one-time-use urban growth boundary expansion to add to the city of Bend's urban growth boundary land owned by the State of Oregon and managed by the Department of State Lands. One of the elements of House Bill 3318 was for the city to consider and adopt a concept plan that would guide the future UGB expansion and comprehensive plan amendments for development of the parcel. And that is what you adopted previously. Another element that's very unique of House Bill 3318 is setting aside a certain amount of acreage of this land from the beginning to be used as affordable housing. And those are the agreements that are before you. You can see the parcel here highlighted in red. It's on the far eastern edge of the city. It's the second half of a larger parcel that is owned or has been owned by the Department of State Lands. The bill directed that the DSL and the city identify a certain number of parcels to be set aside for and purchased by the city for the development of affordable housing. The parcels were set to be in two, three, excuse me, three six-acre parcels and want two one-acre parcels each for a different level of affordability. And because the land is owned by the Department of State Lands, which manages the land it owns on behalf of the Common Schools Fund, the bill also set out that one of the six-acre parcels and one of the one-acre parcels should have a housing developed with a priority for households with at least one member who works for a school district or an education provider. So that's a very unique provision of this law and of this bill and something that is being put into effect by the agreements before you tonight. So getting into what are these agreements, we have an intergovernmental agreement that sort of sets out the next steps for the city to plan for this UGB expansion and comprehensive plan policies that will then allow DSL to sell the full parcel to a master developer for master planning and annexation into the city. The purchase and sale agreement sets out that the city will pay $35,000 per acre for 13 of those 20 acres to be set aside for affordable housing. Seven acres, those seven acres that I talked about, which will have an education priority housing built on them, DSL will convey those parcels to the city for no cost because the benefit to the Common Schools Fund and the schoolchildren of Oregon is that housing, that affordable housing provided for households in which at least one person works for an education provider. The parcel is currently one large parcel of approximately 260 acres. So the purchase and sale agreement sets out how through the master plan and annexation and subdivision, these six and one-acre parcels will be created and then transferred to the city and will bind the subsequent master developer to transfer those parcels when they're created through subdivision process. We also set out what are the restrictive covenants that will be recorded against those parcels to ensure that affordable housing and affordable housing with an education priority is built. And so once the city takes title to those 20 acres, we will record these covenants against the property. And this is the similar mechanism to what we use when we fund affordable housing on other property within the city. We record a covenant where the owner, subsequent owner or developer of housing on that parcel promises to keep the housing built on that lot affordable. And then because educate, or housing with an educator priority is relatively novel in the state of Oregon, we set out a framework so that if it turns out we can't find a developer to build that house, that housing, or there's other legal impediments to building that housing, we can work with DSL to purchase those lots at full market value when they're ready for development and remove that education priority and then put those parcels out simply for affordable housing without that priority or to transfer those seven acres back to DSL so that DSL can sell them on the open market. So that's several years, maybe a decade or more down the line, if we will know how that turns out. This is a long process and these documents really set the foundation for the city to acquire title to these lots when the planning is done and the master developer is on scene to get through all of the planning process. Are there any questions?
Can I make a comment? Thank you so much, Elizabeth. That, I just, that last bit you said, I just don't like the way that sounds. The idea, you know, it seemed, okay, if we were not able to follow through because of finances, I completely understand and we've got to go back in and we've got to buy the property at full market value. But if we can't do it for legal reasons, that's not our fault. And it seems like if we can't do it for legal reasons, we are being penalized with having to then purchase the property at full market value.
And so that was part of the drafting of the bill. It's a great question, Councillor Campbell. And, you know, the city and DSL were at the table with the legislators talking about how this should work because DSL owns this property. And because of their constitutional requirements to maximize value for the Common Schools Fund, this was sort of the approach that seemed appropriate under the bill. Seven-acre parcels will be very difficult to find and build housing on, affordable in particular. So we think the value is still there for the city and then also provides that value to the Common Schools Fund. And because this is a novel type of housing, we don't know if we will have a developer. And we also don't know necessarily if there are changes to state law that would be required to build housing with this priority. And so the legislature added language that said, we'll put this priority in to the extent it's feasible and possible under the law. And so we set out a framework for how do we figure out when we've decided this is not feasible and what happens then? So this is really sort of that back pocket, just framework agreement so that we have a path forward with DSL to build some kind of affordable housing ideally, even if it's not possible to have that educator priority.
Got it. That makes sense, Elizabeth. Thank you. And I, I just want to say, I really hope we can work it out. I think this is, this land trust kind of model, this idea that you might be able to focus on a particular target of employees. I, I just really like that and, you know, I, I hope it works out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, did you have anything you wanted to add or you just pop on so that we know you're there?
Moral support, though clearly Elizabeth did not need that at all.
I just wanted to comment that this was one of the most important parts of that negotiation and that bill was getting the dedicated land for affordable housing with hopefully the priority for educators. And that's something that this council went out in dead and got done on a piece of land that sort of had been in limbo for many sessions. So I'm really excited to see this come through and hopefully keep the process rolling forward to get our new neighborhood there in the future.
Thank you, Councillor Keebler. And also want to acknowledge Mayor Pro Tem Bradman, not, couldn't be here tonight, but is, was a, was a huge part of the process of getting this bill improved upon even further. Thanks, everybody. All right, you ready for a motion?
I move to authorize an intergovernmental agreement and purchase and sale agreement with the State of Oregon Department of State Lands and the city's acquis, for the city's acquisition of 20 acres of land in the Stevens Road tract for the development of affordable housing for a price not to exceed $35,000 per acre and authorize staff to take all actions necessary to finalize the purchase of the properties following the process described in the agreement without further approval from council.
Second, you, Councillor Keebler, or Councillor Campbell and Councillor Keebler, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Great, unanimous. Thank you. Item nine, please.
This presentation will include items nine, 10, and 11. It's the proposed collective bargaining agreement with the City of Bend Employees Association, the Bend Fire Association, and the Bend Police Association.
Thank you, Robyn. Good evening, Mayor Goodman Campbell and Council. My name is Rob Duvall, I'm Human Resources Director for the city and it's my pleasure to present to you the conclusion of the tentative agreements for our three labor associations. So let me start with our mission. And our mission is really to provide quality public services that our community expects. Our goals in bargaining, there were about four goals we focused on. The first of which is that our collective bargaining agreements provide labor stability for a known expense over a term. So that allows our public employees to focus on what's important, which is delivery of public services and the work they do on a daily basis. Secondly, we wanted to enhance our ability to acquire and retain talent in an extremely competitive job market. Third, we keep a keen eye on our stewardship of public resources, both short and long-term. And fourth, we wanted to create as much parity as we can between all of our employee labor groups in terms of total compensation relevant to their occupational labor market. So at the conclusion of my presentation, I'll ask council to consider three motions, one for each labor agreement. And each one of those motions would allow the city manager to execute that labor agreement in substantially the same form as presented. Each one of these CBAs has a three-year term, beginning July 1st, 2022, and expiring on June 30th, 2025. Let me talk a little bit about the collective bargaining process. In Oregon, the collective bargaining process is governed by the Public Employees Collective Bargaining Act. It's under ORS 243650. And what that act provides are the rules under which collective bargaining occur. As I mentioned, we have three bargaining units. We have the Bend Fire Association, the Bend Police Association, and the City of Bend Employees Association. City of Bend Employees Association covers the occupations such as water, wastewater, transportation, building, planning, and engineering. Under each process, when we go through collective bargaining, the first five steps are similar for both our public safety groups, which are strike prohibited, and our COBIA group, which is strike permitted. But the first five steps are uniform. They involve They involve 150-day direct bargaining period, followed by mediation for 15 days, a declaration of impasse, a final offer and costing, and then a cooling off period. Where the paths separate for um strike permitted groups, at that point, the employer can initiate its final offer, its final contract agreement, and the union can then decide to strike if they would like to. Whereas our strike prohibited groups, police and fire, public safety in this case, they would submit, both parties would submit their offers to arbitration, and an arbiter would choose between one of the party's offers. It's a winner-takes-all approach. I should note that strike permitted employee unions can enter into um binding arbitration to resolve any disputes as well, but it's not required. I'll talk a little bit about our history. We and we, the city initiated negotiations with each of the associations during the first quarter of 2022. And we completed tentative agreements just shy of the 150-day um direct bargaining process over multiple bargaining sessions involving extensive negotiations. Uh, once again, a tentative agreement has been reached, and that's subject to council approval. I'll cover the terms of each one. They, as I mentioned earlier, one of our goals was parity between the groups. So first I'll start with is what elements are similar between all three of the tentative agreements? The first is life insurance. Um, employees will now receive life insurance coverage equal to 100% of their annual salary, one times their annual salary. We've added a new holiday into the recognized and observed um list of holidays, and that's Juneteenth for each one of the bargaining groups. Um, we provided a cost of living and a cost of living adjustment is something that is frequently negotiated in collective bargaining agreements of 5% in '22, '23, 4% in '23, '24, and 4% in '24, '25. In addition, we take in consideration any occupational differences between um our employees' total compensation and our comparable or competitors in our in our regional markets. So each one of the groups received a market adjustment. COBIA and non sworn staff in the police department will have an additional salary step added to their pay plan. An additional salary step provides more retention of skilled labor over time. We will also be removing the first step of the pay scale, and what that will do is it'll raise entry wages. That'll lead to better acquisition of talent. The police association had approximately a 6% adjustment mainly due to regional competition in the labor market. And the fire association had a multiple phased adjustment of 8.5% to address current labor market conditions and comparable labor market positions. Each one of these, oh, COBIA and police also have a language premium for fluency in a second language of $1.50 an hour. And COBIA and police will also receive a one-time $2,000 contract execution payment to address current labor market conditions. Finally, the term of each three is once again three years, beginning July 1st, 2022, and concluding June 30th, 25. Now I'll talk to to terms that are specific and unique. First of all, the Bend Police Association has an increase in incentive for professional development and achievement of training in terms of their DPSST certification of an additional 1% in in year 2023. The Bend Fire Association will have an increase of Kelly Days, 48 hours in 2023. What these Kelly Days do is reduce the total number of hours scheduled on an annual basis. For example, our firefighters currently work 2,922 hours annually. At the end of the contract, they'll be resolved down to 2,778 hours. In comparison, uh, 40-hour, eight-to-five Monday through Friday employee works 2,080 hours on an annual basis or a 40-hour work week. So this will reduce a firefighter schedule from an average of 56 hours a work week to 53 hours of work we've over the life of the contract. This brings our fire unit closer to our comparables, um but not um doesn't draw them down to what our comparables actually were. Finally, the fire association will receive a deferred compensation match in 2023, the second year of the agreement, of up to 1.5% when the employee um provides that into a 457B program. Finally, factors that are unique to the City Bend Employee Association. First, because COBIA represents a wide variety of majority of occupations throughout the city, um, there were no selective negotiations on a market adjustment for them. So what we did was is we agreed to conduct a comprehensive um compensation study in '23, '24, and then leading in 2024, we'll look at the results and bargain out any particular um uh occupations that are out of market. Uh, COBIA members will be able to cash out accrued vacation or vacation they've already earned at 15 years of service, up to 80 hours annually. We provided a shift differential for specific employees in the utilities, facilities, and streets and operations department of $175 per hour when they are regularly scheduled to work between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, the night shift. And finally, and we downtown campus COBIA members will also receive a mobility pass, which will provide access to Cascades East as well as a monthly parking pass in the Value Parking area. With that, I will turn um the discussion of the budget and financial impacts over to Sharon. And I'll be available for any questions with Sharon at the conclusion of her presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Rob. So good evening. I'm Sharon Voita, the Chief Financial and Administrative Officer. So Rob gave you a lot of details on the terms of the contracts. And the next question is, well, how are we going to pay for all of that? So you know, as Rob mentioned, and I'm going to kind of talk through each contract separately, but COBIA and police are are kind of viewed together. So as Rob mentioned with COBIA, those employees represent, that organization represents employees across the organization. But when we're kind of doing the analysis on the affordability of the contracts, we're really looking to the general fund because we have COBIA employees that are funded directly or indirectly from the general fund, and that that's really the the key financial indicator um of the health of the city. So we're looking at the general fund. Uh, police is 100% funded out of the general fund. So those two, you know, it's kind of this layering process as we're in negotiations with with all three associations. Um, so when we're looking at the general fund, the the kind of bottom line that we're we're concerned about are our ending reserves. So we have um fiscal policies that council has adopted that sets reserve targets at certain percentages. And we're looking out, not just, you know, Rob mentioned, we're looking at short-term and long-term financial indicators. That's exactly what we're doing through this process, kind of more focused on the the next couple of years and the contract term, which also takes us through the end of our next biennium. But then we're looking longer term out for a a six-year model to make sure we're not just balancing. It's fine to balance right now, believe what are the long-term impacts, especially as we're talking about personnel and those costs are are compounding. So um as we noted in the issue summary, I mean, we're into, we may need to draw down um general fund reserves. We haven't put exact numbers or um amounts or percentages or anything in the issue summary because we're still working through that. So we'll be taking this information as we start building out our next biennial budget, which we will start in just a couple of months. Um, so really waiting until we have more information on our property tax um assessment that we'll find out in um end of September, early October. We'll have another summer of tourism, have a better idea of what the tourism revenues look like, uh, budget savings as we just ended the last fiscal year. So taking all of that into account, also the use of our ARPA funding, so the American Rescue Plan Act. We have about 1.2 to 1.3 million of ARPA funds that haven't been um kind of earmarked or designated yet. So wanting to make sure that we're maximizing all of that revenue. So we have the ARPA funds um to help to help pay for some of these, especially the one-time costs that Rob mentioned of the contract execution payments um for police and um COBIA. Those are some good candidates for ARPA funding. So we're planning to have more information. We'll come back to the stewardship committee probably um in the fall with those initial recommendations to the stewardship subcommittee. And then for fire, um since fire is, you know, the fire contract obviously is just supporting the employees in the fire department, which is its own separate funding program. And while they do get some funding from the general fund, those are all at contract amounts that we have with the Rural Fire Protection District. So as we're kind of doing the analysis to determine when we go out to the voters with uh renewal of the levy, what we, you know, we've said that that levy increase, that levy renewal will need to increase. We're still doing that analysis. We're analysis. We met with the Rural Fire Protection District Board yesterday, actually, to start getting their input. Planning to come back to you all probably at a work session in September with initial ideas um and some scenarios and proposals of what that levy increase would be. But knowing that the the contract increases um that that are in front of you tonight will be will be part of that. Any, any questions on the funding and the finances?
Could I ask, thank you, Sharon, you said that um 100% for police comes from the general fund. I thought that cannabis tax and room tax both um a certain amount had to go to public safety.
So the local marijuana tax goes into the general fund as discretionary revenues, and then police, so good, good attention to detail. So there is about 4% of the total room tax revenues are divided between police and fire. So they each get about 2%, which off the top of my head is like, I don't know, 200,000 or something each. It's, so yes, there is some dedicated funding, but it's not, um, it's not.
It's not like fire where there's no actual other pot.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Anything else?
Any questions for Rob? Okay, no. So we'll um walk through each of the motions separately. So somebody can take it away for item nine.
I move to approve the proposed collective bargaining agreement in substantially the form, the same form as presented between the City of Bend and the City of Bend Employees Association, and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell and Counselor Segal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, unanimous. Thank you. All right, item 10.
I move to approve the proposed collective bargaining agreement in substantially the same form as presented between the City of Bend and the Bend Fire Association, and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell and Counselor Segal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, thank you.
Move to approve the proposed collective bargaining agreement in substantially the same form as presented between the City of Bend and the Bend Police Association, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second, Counselor Campbell and Counselor Mitchell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, unanimous.
I just, I want to take a moment and thank particularly um Rob Duvall. And Rob is sort of understated in the process a little bit. I mean, the the amount of work and really the baseline of establishing positive labor relations is not, is way beyond just a negotiation process. And I think that's a big attribute to Rob's leadership. And so a big thank you to to Rob. And there was an entire team of folks that were involved in that as well. And and Sharon also for all the work that happened to be able to analyze the cost of the proposals. So I'm really grateful to be working alongside these folks.
Yeah. Thank you to the team and to all the employees, and I'm really glad we could come to good contracts that there's parity between everybody, and we found a way to to come to agreement that addresses some of the concerns people have right now about inflation and cost of living and all of that stuff. So good work.
All right. Oh, right. Item 12, please.
Item 12, council's asked to authorize an agreement with WSP USA Inc. for design and engineering services during construction for the Butler Market and Wells Acres and Boyd Acres improvements project.
And just a reminder, all three of the items before you, the contracts were also reviewed with the Local Contract Review Subcommittee, which included Counselor Perkins and Counselor Segal. We met earlier, or I'm losing track of time. I think it was Monday?
Last week.
Last week.
Go ahead, Rory.
Thank you. So first I'll reintroduce myself to counselors that I've been with before and then to the new counselors that I'm with for the first time. Uh, my name is Rory Rowan. I'm with the city's Engineering and Infrastructure Planning Department, or EIPD, as it's sometimes known. Uh, project manager, project engineer. I typically manage transportation and accessibility-related projects. Um, and I apologize for the mouthful on the slide and kind of the contract name. I'll explain that here in a moment. Uh, the Butler Market, Wells Acres, Boyd Acres. Uh, really what it is, is it's a um combined set of projects, and I'll get into that here in a moment. Um, and really, like I said, it's, we got a map here to kind of show that visually and um kind of walk you through just a little bit of the background of what we're trying to accomplish here and what the contract will involve. So you may be familiar with the city's Transportation System Plan, or TSP. Uh, we did a major update to that a couple of years ago. It was adopted in 2020. Um, we engaged a citywide transportation advisory committee made up of citizens. We engaged a lot of neighborhoods across Bend. And as part of that, um several key projects were identified, along with other policies and things, to support transportation in Bend. And in the sort of northeast Bend area, two projects that really rose to the top and are shown here on the map is a needed intersection improvement in the form of a roundabout at the Butler Market Road and Wells Acres intersection. Anyone who's lived or traveled in that area um for years and years has known that with the growth and development and traffic in that area, nearby hospital, things like that, um, a big need. And um also along Butler Market Corridor, uh, Butler Market Road Corridor and the Boyd Acres Road Corridor, um, a lot of different development has occurred over the years. As used to be sort of many, many years ago, more rural kind of county roads before the city expanded into that area. So you know, you don't have to even live there to kind of know. There's a very piecemeal uh sort of sidewalk, bike kind of infrastructure there, uh, some sort of paths. Uh, we've got some photos here in a moment that show just some sort of dirt paths in between where the missing connections are. Um, there's some transit service in there too, but kind of difficult to access. Um, and so that also rose to the top. Uh, it's called a key routes project for walking and biking. There's a number of those that were identified across Bend, and in this area, Boyd Acres, Butler Market Road were the the two that rose to the top. And the transportation general obligation bond in 2020 that went before the voters and was passed, uh, it included funding for the two key routes in particular. Our regular transportation capital improvement program, which is funded through other means in the bond, that has funding for the uh roundabout. And I'll have a financial slide a little bit later where I'll just kind of walk through uh the details for all of that. Um, so I've kind of explained that, the uh different components there in the map. And all of this, by the way, is also laid out. I fortunately forgot to include a link, but we do have project websites for both of these that just went live in the last month or so. Uh, and we did a little bit of preliminary outreach to the Mountain View Neighborhood Association at their recent annual meeting. So uh, there'll be more of that to come as we, you know, we approve the contract tonight and we move into the design work. Uh, there's always a lot of that that happens on these projects. Um, as I mentioned, a few photos here of the corridors, you can see some of the needs out there. Uh, but want to get into just a little bit about what's included in the contract. Um, as I mentioned, kind of two projects combined into one. And uh, and just a quick background on why we do that, uh, some of you that have been with us a while and those that are newer, uh, we in the engineering department, as well as with our counterparts in utilities and our transportation and mobility, our our maintenance and operations, uh, we try very much where it makes sense to do what we call sort of synergy projects, uh, to bring together different funding sources or or projects that are in a similar area. Uh, we've been doing that most recently on the Newport Corridor over the last year or so. Uh, really started off as a stormwater project, but there's other needs there, as we know, with uh various utilities and surface transportation needs. And so uh similar here, there are, it's mostly transportation-related, not so much utilities, but we knew these two projects um could benefit from potentially trying to bring them together, design them under one contract, and uh talk a little bit about schedule, about how we might implement that. But so some of the services, you know, getting in and doing the intersection design at the roundabout, uh, there's right-of-way that will potentially need to be acquired in there. Um, going to look at the traffic control, how we might be able to phase uh potentially keep traffic moving in that area, since we know it is busy. Um, and then the key routes, a little bit different, but we do think it makes sense to include it in the same contract because there's still some similar design, right-of-way needs and utilities and things that do need to be looked at. Um, but to begin with there, the the bond had some sort of very general language about all of the key routes, about just looking at walking and biking improvements. So we plan to do an alternatives analysis in the first potentially six months to kind of be verified and engage the public just to see with the budget that we have in there, uh, how are we able to potentially meet the needs of the bond and the community uh for shared-use path, uh, sidewalk, like I said, very general language in the bond. So we want to get that right, you know, go slow before we go fast and jump into design and right-of-way acquisition and things like that. And kind of to that end, there's a photo there on the bottom of one of the two canal bridges on Boyd Acres Road. So those are always kind of difficult. We have done those types of projects, uh, most recently on the Empire Corridor over the last couple of years. Uh, these are really the exact same canals, just further west. And so we have to engage with the irrigation districts there and kind of look at different designs and what might be possible. Um, and and then like I said, public outreach through all of this, you know, from the time we kick off uh through, you know, when we go to construction. Just briefly here, overall schedule, you know, very tentative. Uh, if we were to approve the contract tonight in the kind of midpoint of 2022, we would begin design immediately on the intersection uh improvements at Butler Market and Wells Acres. Uh, that's a little more known, you know, the footprint there. We know we would be looking at a roundabout there. So the goal would be to try to get going, acquire right-of-way, um, identify any utility relocation needs, and try to find. identify any utility relocation needs, and try to finalize everything there by next summer to potentially get construction finished by the end of 2023. As I mentioned, and you can kind of see it laid out there visually, a little different with the key routes. It's about two miles total. You might not have picked up on that from the map, but it's, it's kind of long. So that alternatives analysis, kind of getting into that and trying to verify that with the budget constraints that, you know, there are for the corridor and the, the needs with the community. And then being able to move into design, which this contract includes, right of way acquisition, and it's a very similar services to the roundabout, just over longer corridors, and then moving into construction. So it's likely that would be phased, you know, just about a further year out and possibly, you know, bidding that. And could be the same contractor, but it may be different. Just see what happens when we get there. Final slide here, I mentioned, I just want to go over some finances on this. Similar format to what you might have seen on some of our other projects. I'll just start with the kind of top right, the overall design contract before you tonight. It's a little over 1.6 million. And it's the first, this is the first contract on the project, you know, since we've kicked everything off or we are kicking things off. As you go down to the bottom there, what we've kind of provided here is since there are two projects, wanted to show that the, the contract really is split into two. A little over 600,000 is for the roundabout itself, and a little over 900,000 is for the key routes. And just one thing I wanted to touch on is why that, that amount is higher is although, you know, it's two miles, there's a lot to look at there, the bridges are definitely a big part of that. So that's something we're going to have to kind of look into during the alternatives analysis phase. And we've done our best to kind of estimate that at this time without knowing exactly what we'll land on. We've tried to be somewhat conservative but reasonable. So it does include everything for the alternatives analysis, survey, design. But the bridges are definitely a big part of that that we'll be looking into. And then finally, upper left, the total project budget is 6.8 million. And from that, this design contract would be the first, you know, expense. But 3 million of that is from the Transportation Capital Improvement Program, and that's the, the fund or the amount that's budgeted for the roundabout, total for design, construction and everything. And the General Obligation Bond will be providing 3 point, a little over 3.8 million for the key routes. As I mentioned, final slide, so I wanted to pause there and answer any questions you might have about the contract or the project.
I have a question, if I have a question. You want to go first?
No, you go ahead.
Okay. Can you go back to the schedule slide Rory? Thanks. So I had a question about the fact that the key routes won't, the roundabout will be completed before the key routes are fully designed. And to me, looking at this map, you know, this roundabout is in the middle of this key route. And, you know, I want to make sure that we are looking at alternatives for the roundabout design. If we get to a point where the, the key route has, you know, multi-use separated pass, and then we have a roundabout that was designed without, you know, thought or, you know, linking up to the, to that final key route design. I just want everything to go together. And the schedule here has me a little concerned that like we've already done the roundabout. Then we get to the finish of the design of the key routes, both of which I think should have, you know, a lot of public and neighborhood input. So can you talk a little bit about how, how will that work? And how can we make sure that we're not getting ahead of ourselves with the roundabout construction when we haven't finished the key route design?
It's a, it's a great question. And the good news is we have actually anticipated that. That was, is one reason that we picked this, you know, we had four proposals. And one reason we picked this team was that was something they identified early on in the proposal stage was that they wanted to get out and start surveying all the corridors, but especially the Butler Market Corridor with the roundabout being in the middle of that. They want to jump into that early on. And we've kind of have a task in there to look at how the key route would tie into the roundabout and see what's possible there and how that may or may not impact right of way needs, depending on what is chosen through there. So, so yeah, we definitely have sort of budgeted for that or scheduled that out in terms of, we know it's a question that the community would be asking from our experience.
Right. Exactly. Yeah, and I would hate to see us not get enough right of way to then end up getting the, the design we want that connects to the key route. So as long as we're keeping that in mind and, and making sure the community understands when they come to give feedback on the initial roundabout stuff that we're actually talking about a full color.
And that, that alternative analysis will include protected bike paths, just similar to what we did at Ninth and Wilson. We'll, we'll be exploring that at that as well.
Yeah.
I just want to know about the cost of the roundabout. 600,000 does not sound like enough for a roundabout to me.
The design.
3 million sounds like too much.
The design is 600, 3 million is the total cost.
It really is a $3 million roundabout.
Well, I mean, those are, those are, those are class five estimates, so they're high level. And so that's the intent of all this work is to then dial in those cost estimates and.
I, I don't want to over promise anything, but I will make one remark about this particular intersection and roundabout. You may recall a few years ago, the at Butler Market and Wells Acres, that north, I guess it's the north side of the road there. That used to be, you know, a big sort of vacant lot, had a radio tower on it. And there was a, obviously I believe it's polished, I can't remember now. But there was a development that went in. When that development occurred and there was a sort of a new leg of the intersection created, we, this is something that happens all the time. I think you heard earlier tonight about our private development work, we do the plan reviews. That was something that we did work on. We actually knew that this intersection would eventually probably have a roundabout or a larger reconstruction at it. We did have dedications for right of way done there. We still will be looking at that, like I said, with alternatives analysis to see, is it enough? Is, do we need others? But the, the two sort of corner lots on that north side that are sort of newer homes from a few years ago, they are smaller lots because the corners were. So there was some forward thinking there fortunately from our planning staff and from the development that dedicated that when that happened. So basically, don't over promise and say that means that, oh, it'll all fit within, you know, the budget as of now. Eric is correct that 3 million is class five, and that will move along as design begins. But there is, that makes it maybe some little different than other intersections.
Yeah, I, I, I should not even think about the Columbia roundabout that we got for.
You got a great deal on those. And that was, and the, the contracting time was a little different. We did, just so council is aware, in the geo bond, when we did the project estimates, I think we, I want to say 3.2 million is what we've estimated for all of the intersections, knowing that that will.
Some will be less and some will be more and it's slope and counter slope. Yeah.
I just want to know if Ryan knew, knows off the top of his head how much the Wilson roundabout costs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I feel like it was three plus.
Was it?
Total cost, I, I don't know what the exact amount was for just the roundabout itself because we're still finalizing it right now. But I will say, just anecdotally, the cost difference between a typical roundabout and the protected one we did there is probably close to about three quarters of a million.
Right.
So we'll keep that in mind as well as we, as we look at these future alternatives. But yeah, I don't know, Steve, if you remember off the top of your head, right under three with the protected.
On Wilson, great, yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah, they did the Columbia roundabouts. Different contracting method and yeah, we got a sweet deal on that one.
We really did. Yeah, we really did. So, yeah. All right, great. And could I just give a shout out to the Mountain View Neighborhood Association? They worked on that Wells Acres roundabout for a lot of time coming to council. And I believe it worked. And, you know, I always want to give credit when our neighborhood associations are effective with their advocacy. And so I'm really excited about this. We've needed it and, you know, thanks to them. I really do think it's thanks to them that this is happening today. Otherwise, it might've been five years, it might've been years down the line. So, great, thanks.
Any other questions? If you just permit me a moment, I just want to let you know, this is actually my last council meeting after.
I was going to share that. And so Rory, we were very happy for him. He got a job working for the city of Corvallis as their transportation director, which is a huge position. We're really sad to see where he goes. But very happy for him because he's achieved so much here. And it's nice to see him move to such a great position, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I, I actually, I just, I was looking at it before this, this meeting. I think I came and my first contractor, the first time I was at council was the month after I started. And now this is, I think, the month before I'll be leaving. So kind of a nice symmetry. And I think I added it up, it's a little over 20 times I've been before the council. So it's been, it's been an honor, an honor to serve the community and of course, work with everyone. So thank you.
And did they tell you, they have a stadium that holds tens of thousands of people? And all those people have to get there on this tiny little residential road? Did they warn you about that Rory? Do you know?
They actually have a site, as you know, Corvallis has a sidewalk fee that that gets paid, right?
Oh, the sidewalk fee is going for. Congratulations.
Thanks Rory, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, good luck with everything and hope to be back from time to time and see the great progress here, so.
Great, thanks to you Rory. You really have made a difference for our city and especially for accessibility.
Yeah, it's always been good working with you.
Accessibility committees Rory, you have made a big difference for a lot of folks.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. All right. Move to authorize an agreement with WSP USA Incorporated in substantially the form presented to council for design and engineering services during construction of the Butler Market, Wells Acres and Boyd Acres Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed 1,646,610 dollars and 24 cents.
Second.
You, Councilor Campbell and Councilor Segal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thanks. Thank you, everybody. Item 13, please.
13, council has asked to authorize an amendment to the agreement with KNE Excavating for Construction Manager, General Contractor Services for the Wilson Avenue Corridor Project.
Okay, let me just pull up my presentation here real quick. Excellent. Okay, we're going. Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Sinclair Burr, I'm a senior project engineer in the Engineering and Infrastructure Planning Department. Like I said, we're bringing forth an amendment to a contract that's currently in place with KNE Excavating for the Wilson Avenue Corridor Project. So a little background on the project, it's largely funded by the General Obligation Bond. It includes improvements to Wilson from Second Street to 15th Street, a new signal at Third Street, improving resiliency of that signal because it's, it's one accident away from falling over. It's, it's close. We're getting some.
Windstorm away from falling over.
We, we need to replace it, yes. We're getting some pedestrian bike improvements at Third and Wilson. There's currently no bike lanes on Wilson at the, the intersection.
Bike through the other day.
We were getting, we, we just completed a new roundabout at Ninth and Wilson. That, it's fun. Yeah. And then we, we got a new roundabout at 15th and Wilson. And then all the way along the corridor, we're building pedestrian and bike facilities. And, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight. So tonight, we're talking about the segment of Wilson just between Ninth and 15th, not inclusive of the 15th Street Roundabout. We still have a little right of way to acquire at that roundabout. And this is kind of a little bit of work that our contractor can take advantage of while we acquire the right of way. So what we're doing there is it's mostly bike and pet improvements, like I said. We are realigning the roadway slightly to the south to make room for a shared use path on the north side of the road. And then we have some protected bike facilities throughout the corridor. So just, so you're tracking is this piece. My little red dot's not showing up, but yeah, piece between Ninth and 15th, kind of the eastern end of the project. So our budget for the project is just over $19 million. This amendment is just over $4 million. Our design fee is 2.8 million. And the, to answer your question before, our, our guaranteed maximum price for Ninth and Wilson was 3.2 million dollars. So, so just, just over that $3 million, we're going to, we think we're going to come under the 3.2 million as a guaranteed maximum price. So we'll, we'll be under that, that number. We have a contract to acquire right of way, mostly between Second and the railroad tracks. So there's some land there that we need to acquire to build out these pet and bike facilities. And then we have an independent cost estimator. We're delivering this via an alternate mode of, of delivery. And so we need to ensure that we're getting competitive prices. And that's what that, that contract is for, just for, just under $100,000. So previously approved contracts, 6.7 million. We think our future amendments with KNE are going to be around 8.3 million for total contract amount of just over $19 million. I do want to point out a couple of budget considerations. So what we're looking at tonight, this contract includes a couple of items. And there's a lot of words on this slide, so I'll try to talk through it real quick here. The, the key route, which is what we're building under this contract, is just under 3.5 million dollars. We're also grabbing some, some early material that will need further down the road on the project. Some wall material at the 15th and Wilson Roundabout that's kind of got a hole there on the east side. And we need to build quite a big wall. So we're getting some wall materials because they take a long time to acquire. We're also grabbing some, the signal poles and the signal mast arms for Third Street, again, because they take a long time to acquire. So we're getting them under this contract amendment. We're also getting some ductile iron pipe, again, takes a long time to acquire. And then lastly, we put in some money in there. We recently acquired the Hong Kong Restaurant at the northeast corner of Third and Wilson. There's money in there to demolish that restaurant to make room for the pedestrian and bike improvements at that intersection. So the, the class five estimate for the, just this segment of roadway was about 2.2 million dollars. Class five means plus 100, minus 50. So we should expect the price to come in within 1.1 million dollars to 4.4 million dollars. And we're kind of on the higher end there. We're still within the budget, but, or the estimate, but we're kind of on the higher end. And what we're seeing is a lot of inflation with our materials. Practically the asphalt, concrete, rock, fuel, it, these take, all, all, these projects take a lot of these materials. They're, they're kind of high on the material end and, and lower on the labor end. So, so we're seeing a lot of inflation right now around those materials. So I wanted to point that out. We, I also just want to point out the, the protected bike facilities, they're about 115,000 for just this segment. They weren't quite contemplated in the TSP cost estimates. We're definitely including them in this piece of work, but they, they weren't contemplated when we put those, those estimates together back when we were developing that TSP. So with that, I'm going to end my presentation and open up to any questions. This is an aerial shot of the recently completed Ninth and Wilson Roundabout. So, any questions?
Sinclair, did you acquire the whole Hong Kong? Right, okay, okay. Once the facilities are built, there, what's remaining of that property, anything significant?
I think the intent is to then, we, we'll have some decisions to make about how we would dispose of that property or use it for other uses. So that's, that will be a, a future council decision.
Yeah.
And about how much of it, you don't know how much will be left?
We're, we're taking the sliver off of it, but the. Building was situated so far to the southwest of that lot.
On the corner of it.
Couldn't get what we wanted to build without demolishing the building.
Yeah. Do you, you don't, do you know the acreage, Eric's?
I don't, and I'm looking to see if anybody else might.
Not off the top.
I'm looking up on that. It's not big. Yeah.
Great.
Cool.
Any other questions? I'll just say I'm really excited about this project. I recently, about, both recently walked the Ninth to, Ninth to Second Street Corridor, coming back from dropping my car off at the mechanic and biked it with my daughter, biked from 15th down to the end of Wilson. It's treacherous, so, you know, really excited, especially for folks living in the neighborhood, but really for everybody because it's such a great route when you connect Larkspur Trail and, and Coiner Trail. You know, through to this, it's through to Wilson, it's going to be really fantastic. And then once you get down onto Wilson, you're pretty much down to the River Trail. So I'm just very excited about this route. So thank you and thanks to the contractor for working with us. Yeah. All right.
And it's a little under a half an acre. Smart staff, yes. Yes.
I move to authorize an amendment to the Construction Manager, General Contractor Agreement with KNE Excavating Inc. in substantially the form presented to council for modernizing Wilson Avenue from Ninth Street to 15th Street for the Wilson Avenue Corridor Project in an amount not to exceed 4,81,282 and 62 cents.
Second.
Hey, thanks, Councilor Keebler, and I'm giving it to Councilor Mitchell.
I think you should.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Woo hoo. Thanks Sinclair.
Item 14.
Item 14, council, council has asked to authorize a progressive design build agreement with KNE Excavating for the Aubrey Butte Distribution Improvements Project.
There we go, and you can see my stuff. Yeah, that'll work. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council.[1793.67]
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Jake Sherman, and I am a senior project engineer, also project manager with the Engineering and Infrastructure Planning Department. And tonight, I will be presenting for the Aubrey Butte Distribution Improvements Project and seeking council approval for a progressive design-build services with KNE Excavating. All right, just a little bit of background on this project. So in October 6th of last year, city staff came to council to adopt the Integrated Water System Master Plan. And the Aubrey Butte Distribution Improvements Project was identified as a priority following the adoption. And then again, two weeks later, October 20th of last year, city staff came back to authorize the use of the progressive design-build procurement and contracting method for this project. And again, in December 15th, staff came back to authorize, to get authorization to contract with Murray Smith for owner's representative services in the amount displayed there. Following that contract approval in December, city staff worked together to come up with the agreement for the progressive design-build services, as well as the request for proposals for the project. Okay, that's an older. That's not the correct one. That is weird. Do you mind if I back out?
Yeah, go ahead and share. If you, Jake, I'm happy to step in if you want to send me the location of the presentation to share it on my screen, if that works better. Or Robin can too.
I, I see. Right, I know, I apologize. It was, the correct one was uploaded for some reason.
So the correct one is online, Jake? So if you want to just, you could, we could go to the website and just pull it up that way. And Robin?
Oh, I have it right here.
Okay.
Yes, sorry. I had two copies, the old and the new, on my desktop and-
Nothing like this has ever happened to any of us before.
Never. All right, I appreciate your patience. All right. That looks more familiar, right? Yes. All right, so I just wanted to kind of highlight the project team. So myself, as the project manager for this project, and then Brittany Barker will be the principal engineer. And then, as I mentioned, Murray Smith will be providing owner's representative services, which they have assisted us with kind of the selection of the PDB team. As well as, in the design phase, they'll provide support, technical review. And then as we get into our guaranteed maximum price packaging, they'll help facilitate those, as well as third-party cost estimating. So the proposed progressive design-build team will be led by KNE Excavating as the contractor, and then Dowell as their lead consultant, and HWA as a sub-consultant to them. And they were selected based on qualifications and pricing. And as you can see there in the slide, we had the request for proposals were closed on May 5th of this year. We received two proposals. Those were scored by five city staff, and we conducted interviews for each of the proposed teams. And then, based on the highest price score for KNE Excavating, they were, the notice of intent to award was issued on May 27th.
And just to clarify, highest score, not, price is a factor in this?
Yes, yes, price, yes. Highest score, which qualifications and pricing. I don't know why it won't. There we go. So I just kind of wanted to touch base on progressive design-build and what it is and how it differs kind of from our typical design bid-build or low bid in this situation. So with design bid-build, usually the owner, so the city in this case, we would contract with a consultant in the beginning parts of the project. And then we would get to 100% design. That 100% design would then be procured with an invitation to bid. That invitation bid would then be posted, and we would receive bids from contractors. And the whole low bid part is where whoever has the lowest bid, we would go with that contractor. With your design bid-build project, there's correspondence between the consultant and the contractor in, during construction. But there's not as much as, like I'll get into progressive design-build. So really, the city in this case, like a design bid-build would be kind of the more in-between, go man. Any sort of change order management would be through the city. But in talking about progressive design-build, so the two diagrams there, the one on the right, it really shows the integration, collaboration with not only the builder, but also the consultant, who they are on one team. So in this case, KNE Excavating essentially will be the lead and the one contracted with the city, but they have brought on their own team, which would include Dowell and HWA as their consultants. And then the diagram there as well, the advisor. So in this situation, Murray Smith, which we have an owner's representative services, they're directly contracted with the city, but also integrated into that design-build team. Some benefits to the progressive design-build contracting method would include accelerated project delivery schedule, so guaranteed maximum prices. They can happy, happen early on in design. So that allows for early start and completion dates for construction. Also sequencing of project delivery with consideration to impact, community impacts, priorities and best value, maximizing value and cost certainty for the project. So this would involve open book estimating with, with the GMP negotiations. That provides transparency to the owner as we're determining those GMP. And also that the estimate is validated by a third-party estimator. Other benefits include collaboration with focus on team innovation, synergy opportunities and owner involvement, mitigating risks through team strategy and ownership, as well as early engagement and teaming with the contractor for integration and successful partnering. That would include things such as constructability, cost certainty, value engineering. This is something that you wouldn't get with that typical design bid-build. The contractor is not a part of the team when we're designing it. So it's really beneficial to have the contractor on board so we can really determine those, those costs. This map represents the entirety of the project. So in the Integrated Water System Master Plan, it compiled nine sub-projects. And they were compiled essentially to be known as the Aubrey Butte Distribution's Improvements Project. So improvements on this project will address current and future capacity, existing aging and undersized pipes, fire flow requirements, as well as improved hydraulic performance from east-to-west conveyance. This project has been further prioritized due to deteriorating pipes in the city's water supply. So in this map, it's pretty high-level in the sense of it's, it's pretty zoomed out. I mean, you can see Mount Washington there, and then Highway 97, no, Wall Street is the furthest east that you can see. But we're talking approximately 11,000 feet of new pipe that will be installed. About 4,500 feet of pipe that will be upsized. So that basically means taking the existing pipe that was identified as undersized in the master plan and then increasing it. And then another 7,000 feet of existing pipe will be replaced. So essentially, the existing pipe is old, it's aging, and we need to replace it with new pipe. Most notably here, the sub-project known as the new transmission line. It's going to be a new 30-inch transmission line that runs essentially from Mount Washington Drive, Chevelle Park, and then run east towards the existing Aubrey Butte Reservoir. And I just would like to note that the alignment that you see there in green, it is tentative, and we will be conducting alternatives analysis to determine the best route. Also included with this project is some synergy opportunities. As previously mentioned, it allows us to make some improvements that we're kind of impacting with replacing some of this water line. One of those would be some intersection improvements at the Portland and Ninth Street intersection, as well as some stormwater improvements that are known in the area of the South Aubrey Butte Drainage. So the contract that is before you tonight for approval is with the design builder, KNE Excavating. That is to initiate the pre-construction phase of the project, which will be led by their consultants Dowell and HWA. The pre-construction phase of this project includes conducting a few alternatives analysis. One of those being for the new Aubrey Transmission Line that I previously mentioned, and determining, again, the best route for it, as well as the most efficient method for replacing the existing water main that runs underneath the Portland Avenue Bridge, which you see in the photo there. And also, another analysis will, alternatives analysis will be conducted for the intersection improvements at Portland Avenue and Ninth Street. So part of the contract tonight, before you, will include the alternatives analysis, but it also will be for the design services for the entire project. So for all those nine sub-projects that I'd shown you in the map, as well as the synergy opportunities. And then I will be coming back to council here to present some GMP, so guaranteed maximum price, construction packages. And I have a schedule that'll show you some tentative dates. But KNE and Dowell and their proposal had proposed to, and that's to be determined as we move forward with this project. So here, I have a tentative project schedule. So following tonight's approval of the contract, this will get us straight into design for kind of being proposed as this first GMP package. That would get us designed through next summer. And then, as I had mentioned previously, that one of the benefits with PDB is being able to get going on construction early. So that the council date that's there tentatively is set for spring of next year. And then design would be wrapped up as we are just starting construction. Construction for that first proposed GMP would be from the spring till about the end of the year next year. And then also, following tonight's approval of contract, we will dive into alternatives analysis for that new transmission line, and then jump right into the design of the transmission line, as well as some of the other sub-projects. That design will get us into late next year. And then, as you see, the tentative council date for the next proposed GMP package would be in the summer of 2023. And I do, do show a time there where we're looking at the pipe procurement. So right now, there are pretty significant lead times with large diameter pipe. And so we wanted to account for that in the schedule. And then construction getting, once we have the pipe, will be probably about spring to the end of the year, 2024. So this slide represents the project cost information. The table on the left, it shows the different funding sources. So we have water as the main one, the GO bond, as well as the stormwater. So just kind of emphasizing that that 3.5 million with the GO bond has been identified for the intersection improvements at the Ninth, the Ninth Street and Portland Avenue intersection. And then the stormwater improvements shown there will be in conjunction with that new Aubrey Butte Transmission Line, and will be working, or will be happening concurrently with that. So on tonight's agenda, we have the contract with KNE Excavating as the design builder. And that is for the pre-construction phase, which would include those alternatives analysis that I had mentioned, as well as the entire design for just under $4 million. Some previously approved contracts would include the owner's representative service with Murray Smith. And then some future contracts and/or amendments would include those two proposed GMP construction packages, as well as professional services during construction with the owner's representative, which may include construction management or inspection services. And that is all I had. My next slide just has a picture, so. That's, that's of the Aubrey Butte Reservoir site, which is right next to the Hillside Park, if you're familiar with that area. Are there any questions?
Yes, please. Thank you very much, Jake. Does this project get any, get us any closer to in-pipodro power?
I, so one of my colleagues and also Brittany Barker, they're, they're looking into that, and we're going with our ONM staff. I think, I believe the next step is feasibility.
Yes, and we're gonna be looking, we're gonna be coming back to council shortly with the results of that feasibility.
Great. We've got a lot of water with a lot of energy.
Yes.
You work for us.
Yes, and I believe this site is kind of prime because it is, there's a lot of open space.
Great. Well, that's great. Thanks.
Jake, I saw there was 3.5 million from the GEO bond. Is that just for Portland Corridor improvements, or where is that going?
So, so that 3.5 right now is kind of focused on the intersection improvements. We'll do the alternatives analysis, and we'll determine what is the best improvement that can happen there. It's a pretty tricky area because of the grades there. There is some right-of-way acquisition that might have to take place, depending on which way we go. You know, there's, there's a couple kind of high-level alternatives that we could look at, might be a mini roundabout or something similar to that. But once we do alternatives analysis, then we'll be able to see if the feasibility of it, and then determine where the rest of the money could go, which could be some sidewalk infill along Portland, but not necessarily major improvements along the corridor.
Well, Portland, Portland is identified as a key route. There's actually close to 20 million for that whole, whole, 17 and a half for the whole corridor.
Okay, and so is this, was this on the list of projects that came out of TBAC? Is understanding as something we were gonna be doing on this timeline? Because I know this is kind of like synergy.
Yeah.
We're already there, right? So, so make sure they're aware of this is happening and-
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So yeah, just to highlight, the Transportation System Plan identified a total lead along the entire Portland Avenue Corridor of 17.7 million. The GEO bond is only funding three and a half. So that's where we've got to be selective on where we're gonna use that three and a half. We'd like to see improvements along the whole thing. But we're gonna start at Ninth and Wilson because we're tearing pipe up there already.
Portland and Ninth.
Yeah, sorry. Ninth and Wilson. Starting there, and then we'll see what improvement we can make, as Jake noted. And then we'll take whatever's left and extend it as far as we can.
Okay, yeah. And I think you had this on your slide, Jake, but the construction on this is not gonna start until Newport is complete.
Yes, I apologize. I should have, I even like asterisked every, but yes, the first GMP package, it is dependent upon the completion of Newport's, Newport improvements. Yes, yes.
Great.
Any other questions?
Move to authorize a progressive design-build agreement with KNE Excavating for the Aubrey Butte Distribution Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $3,986,428.7, and to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement in substantially the form presented to council.
Second.
Councilor Campbell and Councilor Segal, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 15.
Item 15 is the second reading of an ordinance approving the urban growth boundary expansion, comprehensive plan map designation of medium-density residential, and urbanizable area zoning for 39.55 acres to accommodate future development in association with HB 4079, City of Bend Affordable Housing Program.
Move for the roll call vote on the second reading of the ordinance expanding the urban growth boundary by 39.55 acres, including the subject property and the abutting rights of way, amending the comprehensive plan map to designate the subject property medium-density residential, and rezoning the subject property to urbanizable area as identified in Exhibits A and B as recommended by the hearings officer.
Second.
Thanks, Councilor Campbell and Councilor Segal. Roll call vote, please. You, Councilors Campbell?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Segal?
Yes.
Keebler?
Yes.
Mayor Goodman Campbell?
Yes.
All right, item 16.
Item 16 is council action reports.
We'll start with Councilor Keebler.
Okay, so I have a couple of things. I'll start with the shorter one. I recently met with Kennedy, whose last name I'm forgetting, who is heading up an effort to- who is heading up an effort to try to find a place for a children's museum in Bend. And they are working on finding funding. They have good leads on that. They're also looking for a place to put it and, you know, talking to developers or looking for synergy with publicly owned land. What they are looking for right now, what they've already received from some other public entities and, and other groups, is just letters of support for them in their efforts as they go out to start to look for some grant funding and things like that. So I wanted to ask council if, council would be in favor of, you know, putting together a letter of support. I'd be happy to draft it and run that by everybody. And again, not committing to anything on our part as far as funding or land, but just saying we support the effort. We want, we think it's a, a value to our community to try to cite something like that in Bend and support them seeking grant funds and trying to keep working on that. Thoughts? Hearing no objections.
It's a great idea.
Yeah. Okay, great. And then I also have an explanation and a motion that came out of our executive session that I will go into. So earlier this year, council acquired the former Rainbow Motel. The purchase met both short-term and long-term community needs, including potential use in the near term as temporary shelter, as we heard that it's already happening right now. And then ultimately to support core area redevelopment goals, including affordable housing, Civic Plaza, or other public uses like a new city hall. The city is continuing to identify strategic acquisitions in the core area that will serve these goals and is a committed partner to the redevelopment of the core area and the Bend Central District. The city now has an opportunity to purchase the property at 184 Northeast Franklin Avenue, which is one door down from the former Rainbow Motel on the corner there. Purchasing the property at 184 Northeast Franklin furthers the city's goals of acquiring centrally located adjacent properties that can eventually serve as a future redevelopment site in the core area. In the near term, the property will be leased back to the current occupant, Paulson's Floor Coverings, for one year. So I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into an assignment agreement in a form approved by the city attorney with Taylor Development LLC to assume Taylor Development LLC's interests under its sales agreement with EDIM LLC for the purchase of the property at 184 Northeast Franklin Avenue, tax let numbers ending in 4500, 4600, and 4700 in the amount of $2.9 million and $1, plus $10,050 in administrative costs, as well as to direct staff to take whatever steps are necessary under the sales agreement to close the purchase without further council approval, including but not limited to entering into lease with EDIM LLC to occupy 184 Northeast Franklin for no less than one year after close, with rent payments to the city equal to $13,196 per month.
Counselor Segal? Yeah, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, great. Thank you, Counselor Keebler.
And then, yeah, it's been a while since we had a council meeting. Obviously been out doing lots of different things. Just a highlight for me in this break was attending Pride here in Drake Park. It was a great event. It was just really nice to see families, people, kids, everybody out being themselves and having a good time in some nice weather down in our park. So I won't go into everything else. I'll just highlight that one and, and let other people talk about what they've been up to.
Thank you. Counselor Segal?
No real updates, just been trying to learn the role. And it's been very helpful to have amazing staff from the city of Bend. So I just want to thank all the staff that has helped myself and Counselor Mitchell learn the ropes and the other counselors as well. Thank you.
Perkins?
Let's see. Barb, I'll let you talk mostly about MPO. But I do want to say one of the cool things that I heard at our meeting was an update from Toby on the Bird Bikes. And there have been, these numbers are coming from the top of my head, Barb, so tell me if I'm wrong. But I think there was 9,000 unique riders in June and July. And, but the thing that really stuck out to me was that they've identified that there are, I think about 210 daily commuters using the Bird Bikes, which is, I think is really cool and a great testament to the program. And just wanted to thank the, the staff for their continued work on that. The other sort of main thing was the Human Rights and Equity Commission met at the end of June. And we had a new member, and that new member was actually chosen to be the vice chair of the Human Rights and Equity Commission. And the group also picked the other members of their sort of shared governance system, which is a communications lead, a council lead, and a safety lead. And I think that's it.
So Mitchell?
Yeah, I'll just echo what Stephen said, just learning the ropes. I think it's important to just say to the, I get a lot of, and Stephen, you might speak to this as well. I get a lot of people in the community saying to me, how are you gonna do this and, and stay safe, like, and be okay? As like a member of a historically harmed group. So I just want to like put that out there. That that's actually one of the, the things that I'm fielding the most from the community, that people are asking that. And so I just want to just, I guess maybe just put it into the ether, to the microphone, that it's, it's notable to me that that's, that's the most feedback that I'm getting as I'm like learning the ropes and trying to understand how all this works. At the same time, people, it's very much on people's consciousness that these roles are historically, you know, not for folks, not for diverse populations, people to have these seats, these positions. And so, just like kind of fielding that and noticing the, the emotion and the energy behind that, it's just kind of, I'm just noting it, that it takes up a lot of energy and space. It's been asked that a lot. And I don't have an answer fully, but it's, I think, something that should just be named and that we should all just stay mindful of. Yeah.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yeah.
And of course, you have, you know, I think the support of mayor and the entire council and all of city staff.
Yeah.
It's not up to us really in.
Yeah, it's more just, you know, it's just, it's just interesting to, you know, I'm just noted, I'm just watching it. And just make, you know, I, I feel, I feel safe and okay right now and, and as I hope everyone in this room does. But it's just notable, just to watch that process kind of go down and how, how people are responding to me in the community. Because I think a lot of people would have told me that they would feel really scared and concerned for. So people feel concerned about, for my welfare, actually. I don't right now, but it's notable, so.
Thank you. Thank you. And I will share that no one has ever asked me if I feel physically, people ask me, how do I stay sane?
Yeah, how do you do it?
Yeah, how do you do it? I can't, but no, in almost eight years.
Interesting, right?
Right, exactly. So that's what I mean. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. So yes, we had our MPO meeting yesterday. I also was really excited to hear about the Bird Bikes. Notable to me was that the Bird Bike Company themselves say that if they have, on average, a little more than just one ride per bike, they're meeting their goal. And the very, very busiest Bird Bike Day, which was the Fourth of July, it was more than four rides per bike. And that even on the average, it has been closer to two or three when one is the target. So that was the other metric that I was excited to hear about. And then the other thing we heard was from Toby about more bike racks specifically, which means more places for people to leave them in legal approved spots. And little tweaks to the system. Incentives for leaving bikes in the correct place, building up to fines if we decide that we need to actually start fining people. But in general, to me, it really does sound like the program is working. It, it was a bit of a chaotic start. And, and thank you to everyone who has been patient about that. But I just do really feel like all of the data and the feedback we're getting shows that people are learning, they're becoming more compliant, and people are using these things, which is just great. The other thing we did at our MPO is we have been formalizing the process by which people can apply for funds that the MPO distributes. And so we have put together a process and just yesterday, put together criteria by which you would earn points. And so those points have to do with safety projects, connecting to other forms of mobility, et cetera. So we are just about done with that process, which will be great. And then the, that's all I have to report because, yeah, it's been a while since our last meeting. I had a lovely bit of time off. I am looking at my phone because in here is a motion that I am supposed to read. All right, tonight, council had the opportunity to begin the process of purchasing a parcel of land in Southeast Bend from ODOT. This is a parcel between Leschwach Tires and the southbound on-ramp to Highway 97 near Murphy Road. ODOT is taking this property through its surplus property process, and we expect them to make it available for the city to purchase in the coming weeks or months. Although we do not have the ability to put this parcel to use right now, we believe this is an opportunity for the city to take a tangible step towards securing property to support our housing goals. The most likely use for this property over time is as a respite for unhoused community members seeking safe parking or a managed outdoor shelter. Prior to any final decision being made on how to use the land, the city intends to involve neighbors in the discussion. Those will likely be conversations for the next council to have in 2023. For now, we just want to acquire the land so we have it for use later. The project, the property will be subject to a revisionary clause, which will require the city to transfer the property back to ODOT if the property is needed for a proposed interchange between Murphy Road and Highway 97, anticipated to be at least three years from now. We may have the opportunity to take full ownership of this property if it is not needed for the Murphy interchange. Therefore, I move to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement in a form approved by the city attorney with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the purchase of approximately 1.66 acres located at 61071 Highway 97, based on the appraised value of $45,000, subject to a revision, reversion, reversionary, reversionary interest in ODOT, and to take all steps necessary to finalize the purchase without further action from council.
Second.
All right, thank you, Counselor Campbell and Counselor Segal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right. I also enjoyed the, a little bit of time off from our council meetings by working extra hard at my regular job. But had the pleasure of attending the Lighthouse Ribbon Cutting for the Lighthouse Navigation Center.
Oh, great.
And it was just a really wonderful event. There was a ton of turnout from the community. They did an awesome job with all of the, you know, refreshments and welcoming everybody into the center. But what really stood out to me was just that there was such a sense of, a shared sense of pride from everybody there. Everyone who worked on the project. Of course, the staff for Shepherd's House and their board and everybody present from Shepherd's House. But also even the guests were just really visibly proud of the space and, and what they're doing there. So it was really great to get to participate in that. They had two kind of program participants and, and former guests cut the ribbon for the center and got to use the big scissors. And, yeah, we're just, I'm really happy about that, seeing that come to fruition. And it was great to really take the time to reflect at that event on, on how we got there and how, you know, just a, just a few years ago, Bend didn't even have, you know, we didn't even have a location for a warming shelter in the winter. And now we have not just a year-round shelter where anyone can go, but we also have a place for people to go during the day. And it was an especially hot day, so it really emphasized how important it is to have safe places for people to go and access resources and services. So it was really just a great, a great event. So thanks to everybody who made that happen. And I'm hoping that we see more places like that developing really soon in Bend. So we have a couple of neighborhood leadership association reappointments and reappointments to consider. For reappointments, we have Chris Pearson, who was put forward by the Aubrey Butte Neighborhood Association, and Jim Cristo from Southeast Bend Neighborhood Association. And then for new NLA appointments, we have John Bennett from Mountain View Neighborhood Association, Gina Francosa from River West Neighborhood Association, and Shannon Mara from Summit West Neighborhood Association. I move to approve the appointments to the Neighborhood Leadership Alliance.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So you'll have to bear with me, I've got a fairly lengthy report because it's been a while since we've had a meeting. I know it's the end of the meeting, so I'm just kind of giving you a warning, but there's a lot of good stuff in, in the report. Well, first off, I just wanted to. This sheet, so I just wanted to revisit this from the work session. And also to let you know, both particularly for Mo and for Stephen, that there is staff assigned to each of these committees. So I want to make sure that you know that there's resources that will reach out to you so that you're not just thrown at these committees and you understand the context and all of that. So I wanted to make sure that was clear first. I didn't get a chance to say that. And then also just again, ask the question, are we okay with this list as written? Or are there any proposed changes? Otherwise, we'll kind of go with this. There'll be a more comprehensive review of the A's and assignments in January. This is just to kind of get us more over the next six months.
One thing that stands out to me, I live in the Larkspur neighborhood. I don't know if that's.
It's, that's very typical.
Y'all know that, like?
No, in some ways, it provides a nice connection point, so.
To make sure that that was appropriate.
But, like, I'm the liaison at River West where I live.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. It was mentioned the heat, so we have some heat coming up. I don't know if you've looked at the forecast?
I think it's here.
It's here, but then like next week, it's gonna go a little bit cooler over the weekend and then like in the hundreds for like five days in a row next week. So the whole state is, it looks like, under a heat emergency.
The whole world.
So I wanted to just make sure council was aware that the recent changes that you made to the shelter code really make it more possible for heat, temporary shelters to be set up. So if you remember, last year when we had the heat dome, we declared an emergency that allowed for facilities to open. We don't, not need to go through that process of declaring an emergency because of those changes to the code. So a lot more flexibility. I also just wanted to give you some on-the-ground things that are happening. One, our utility crews are going out to huddle to provide misting tents. We're also deploying Reach is our contractor that is doing mobile outreach and providing additional cooling resources by meeting people where they're at. We're also, Reach is coordinating with Central Oregon Villages and providing cold water and ice to individuals on huddle and within the China Hat area on a regular basis. And as mentioned, the navigation center on Second Street will be activated as a daytime cooling option for emergency as needed. Bethlehem Inn, the current guests will be able to stay on-site during the day so that they have relief from the hot weather. And they're also open two to five daily for anyone in the community needing any services. And the Deschutes County Homeless Outreach Services is working on a coordinated response for deploying resources really throughout the region and the extreme weather. In fact, that, I think that was sort of a, what happened last year with the heat dome really helped organize folks and create some structure for situations like this. Speaking of kind of assistance to our vulnerable community members, and I was in the city manager reports last week, but I just wanted to emphasize, we have also folks that are living really on the edge and at risk of losing their home, and a lot of that is just paying utility costs. So as you know, during the pandemic, we suspended, water shut off. We've just, after two years, we've now kind of getting folks back on a payment plan. And I just really want to thank the staff for their compassion and their work. We had over 2,000 folks that were kind of delinquent. We've really gotten that down to 400, 500. We had over 2,000 folks that were kind of delinquent. We've really gotten that down to 400, 500. We are working with folks to come up with reasonable plans to get folks caught up. And I have been doing ride alongs, just like I did public safety ride alongs with police and fire. I'm kind of moving this quarter into ride alongs with our infrastructure core service areas. So that includes our utility department, water and sewer and wastewater, our transportation mobility and then all the engineering or capital projects. And so I've been able to kind of shadow some of our frontline staff, taking those phone calls and just really impressed with that team. And also got to sit in on some negotiations with our project teams. And I'll be working, going out in the field with transportation. Council's going to be part of that because we're going to reinstate the tours that Council Schenkelberg started. So we'll be looking forward to a CIP Capital Improvement Program. So looking at capital projects. We're going to do that probably in late August. So we'll start surveying you for dates, get on a bus.
Wait till it gets really hot.
You can see all the great work that's happening. All right, speaking of CIP, just kind of real time information. So the Ninth and Wilson Roundabout was open. That's a little bit of old news, but I know you were gone.
New for me.
The Newport project also was, a portion of it was completed. That first leg of the Dog Bone is now open. It's pretty cool. And now that section from 11th Street to 14th is closed. So yeah, you know, get excited and then there's more disruption.
A little confusing because you have to like drive over like.
The hump, right.
The Dog Bone, but it's slowing people down, so it's good.
And just again, really encourage folks to frequent the businesses there that are impacted. So you can find more details about these projects on our, we actually had a report that was on the consent agenda, our CIP report. So if you really want to dive into details of all of our CIP projects. Is Capital Improvement Program, yes. And street preservation projects. So we've really, we're in street preservation mode too of just ensuring our pavement condition index continues to climb up. So Putnam, Matt Washington and Shaveland Park Road are all kind of scheduled for a new layer of asphalt. That's the grinding of the old asphalt is taking place as we speak. That's what a grind and overlay is. And then the new layer of asphalt comes in and that will take place on Putnam for next week. Will end of this week and early next week. Matt Washington is going to be approximately the last week of, that next weekend into the early part of August. And Shaveland Park is more towards the, I would say, latter part of August. So there's some disruption and detours that are actually happening right now and some closures, just to let the public know. And we also are doing some of our own kind of self performed work with our crews too, with those problematic spots that are just in rough shape. So paving will start the end of this month on the 31st and be mostly during the evening hour, nighttime hours from about 6:00 PM to 4:00 AM. That includes 27th Street, Galveston, Obie Riley, Butler Market and the Franklin Underpass. I think I'm getting all like, yeah, those areas all need it. So you're going to get a nice sort of some patch over. We are going to be reconstructing Galveston as part of a CIP Capital Improvement Program in 2024.
Oh, really?
But this will, this will just help us buy a little time because, yeah.
There's some potholes that like a small child could follow.
Yes, there certainly are.
All right. Oh, and then vegetation. So we've had such a wet spring, so there's a lot of weeds, grass. We have, after a two year suspension, we are now back in partnership with our inmate, the inmate crews to do weed removal on key rights of way areas. So that's happening. You'll see a lot more of that. So just look, be on the lookout and also just slow down too in all of that construction or if there's work crews out. Okay, legislative, switching gears, talking about legislative priorities. So we have the 2325 legislative session coming up. That's the long session that happens next. It will really be beginning in about February or so next year. So the League of Oregon Cities, which Bend is a part of, all cities in Oregon are part of, is establishing, has a process to establish legislative priorities. I know Council Perkins sits on one of the committees, is it? That's just Council Keebler. And so those subcommittees, there are seven of them, have forwarded recommendations for, to help develop a legislative advocacy. So each city gets five votes. There's over 20 or so proposals. And so the process now is to ask input from cities to help narrow that down. What I am proposing, what you'll see is an email from me right after this council meeting. It was a simple form as well as some detail about those legislative proposals from each of the seven committees. And those committees include community development, general government, energy and environment, finance and taxation, telecommunications and broadband, transportation and water and wastewater. So the city ultimately gets five votes, but what I want to do is just each, have you individually fill them out. I'll collect them and at the August 3rd council meeting, and we'll have a brief work session agenda item. We'll sort of share the results and then we'll help put together our top five priorities based on your feedback. And then I'll submit that to the league by their deadline, which is August 5th. So that sounds okay. You'll see that email soon. Just, it shouldn't take you that long to just mark your top five priorities. All right, and I think that is it. That's it all. All right, it's 9:08. Yeah.